The Thursday, September 23rd, 2020-21 Administrative Briefing and Work Session of the Marion County School Board is now called to order at 9:00 a.m. We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first, and we will leave a legacy of success. Please turn off or put on vibrate any electronic devices to avoid disturbing others, and we'll begin this morning's work session, as always, with our administrative briefing. Good morning, Dr. Gullett.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm going to just over here a little bit. So, pleasure to see you all today. I do have a few briefings. I want to start by just recognizing that we have two representatives from the Department of Health on the call who will speak to us shortly after the briefing, and that's Kristi Jurgens and Sherri Duncan. We appreciate them being here on behalf of the Department of Health. And I would like at this time to call up Ms. Boston Ellis. She's going to provide an update from a financial sense of where we are with some bonus pay in another matter. Thank you.
Great way to open the morning.
Right. Money.
Chair King. Chair Throh, Vice Chair King. You threw me off.
Something wrong.
Threw me off. Board Member Cummings, Board Member Browning is on the phone? Is that correct?
Yes, he is.
Superintendent Gullett and Attorney Powers. Good morning again. Chair Throh threw me off with the update for financial information. But I do want to share with you because I realize there's been some concern about the bonus that we are paying out of the ESER, the federal grant, ESER II. Just a reminder that that grant was broken up into four different parts. It was academic acceleration, technology assistance, and non-enrollment. So those three portions have been fully approved by the Department of Education. The last and the largest piece is the lump sum. We have not received that approval yet. What we have been told by the Federal Grants Department through their discussions with DOE, that it could be as soon as two weeks. And I believe Dr. Gullett found out it could be as soon as two weeks or two months. So I wanted to let you know that. Another question that you had asked about temporary employees and part-time employees, what could we provide to them? And as you recall, I sent you an email, which you have a copy of now, a few weeks ago, discussing those numbers. There was a request about how many part-time slash temporary employees we have, and what were those types of jobs. And as you can see on that copy, it ranges from our after-school program employees all the way down to some temporary bus drivers that held. I also want to bring to your attention that the governor did pay for principals and our full-time teachers out of one pot of money. So what we had added to ESER II was all of our remaining full-time employees who met the same criteria as the governor. So that would have been, they were full-time, and they were employed as of May 26, 2021. So those are the ones that were included in ESER II. And I believe that's when we got on the discussion about part-time and what we were doing for them. So we've gone back and provided that information to you. It's various groups. We have some full-time who didn't meet the May 26 deadline. There were 616 employees. We have some part-time temporary employees that were employed as of the May 26 deadline, 349. And then we had some part-time temporary who didn't meet the May 26. So they could have worked for us the whole year up until, say, April. So that's that group, 132. And then there were some questions about substitutes and contracted employees. Substitutes, we counted about 277 throughout the year. And then contracted employees, there were about 153. There was a question about that. Those are our speech therapists, our physical therapists, those folks that are in the classroom and working with our students. So that's what that group represents. Again, our examples of part-time include the MAPS program, the Old Extended Day, student workers, bus drivers, temporary cafeteria monitors, and then the adult ed part-time. We have quite a few adult ed part-time employees. So I provided that information to you to mull over and to give us some direction about what you want to do. We did find out we can fund it through the ESER II grant if that is the desire of the board, but we need direction on, you know, what employees you were actually considering to be included. And we can come back with a proposal to you for part-time, our temporary workers, if you would like. We've been talking about it a little bit, you know, maybe they don't get the full bonus, maybe there's a proration that we could look at, but just wanting your direction of where we need to go next.
Thank you. Board? Board Member Browning, are you catching this conversation, sir?
We did have to mute the line temporarily because of the static. ESER. Could you elaborate on what that is? I don't have all my acronyms down.
Yes, sir. That is the federal funding that we are receiving through the state. You may know it as the CARES grant.
And so the idea is that can be used for a number of things. Now, are we talking, I just want to be clear, are we talking about that bonus for vaccination with this?
No, sir. This is just the bonus that falling in line with what the governor did for our principals and teachers. So that bonus, yes, this is outside of that. This is basically all the other employees that were working during the pandemic.
And this is a special bonus to them with these ESER funds, and they can only be used for this?
No, sir. We have a lot of items that we've included. As I stated, there was a section on academic acceleration, so that is in support of getting our students back on track, such as after-school tutoring, summer school. Then there was a technology assistance to help us buy things like Chromebooks and other technology, supporting our students to be at a one-to-one ratio. Then there was a non-enrollment. There was an indication that we needed to up our efforts in identifying students that we might have, that were with us before COVID, but then we had to go out and find them. So these were directives from our legislators and our governor. So those three pots of money. And then there's other things that we are using ESER for that, again, includes after-school tutoring, supporting them through mental health, providing additional counseling, et cetera, et cetera. But it's, these are.
And this is, this is all through our superintendent. So this operational explanation, which is really helpful, especially to all the folks out there that want to become educated up on what's actually taking place. So this is all through the superintendent.
That's correct, Board Member Browning.
Okay, thank, yes. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Absolutely. Any other board members care to weigh in at this time? Because you want a decision or a consensus relatively soon, and in anticipation of as soon as two weeks, when different employees have asked me, I've said, hopefully before Christmas, is what I've been saying. Because I think that our employees need reassurance of what our intentions are, and then the assurance that they are going to get the money. So if we could accomplish those two things.
Madam Chair, if I may, so for clarification, I'd like to add the reference to Ms. Boston Ellis's comment. I am participating in the Florida School Superintendent Meeting this week. Yesterday was our first day, and this is one of the questions that we asked of the Commissioner when he came by to meet with us briefly. And the answer was, a couple of weeks, it could be a couple of months. And so we did not get a definitive answer, but we will continue to monitor and ask, and as soon as we have information, we will share.
Thank you.
I would like to add one more thing. Because the big piece of the ESER grant is in the legislator's review process now, there was a recommendation from the DOE contact with our Federal and Grants Program Department that we would probably need to go ahead and amend one of the previously approved grants in order to facilitate the part-time, if we wanted to go to fast-track that. Or we could just wait and amend the big pot once we get that approval. So we do have some ability to go ahead and amend a grant that's already approved, if you wish to go forth with the part-time.
Part-time or full-time? Like the?
The part-time.
Okay.
And the full-time, yes, the full-time who did not meet the May 26 deadline, you're correct.
Okay, that's how I was just.
That's both, really?
Yes.
So there's approximately 748 people that's not eligible, from what I'm looking at, as far as full-time and part-time that did not meet.
Right.
Deadline. So we're taking them out, correct?
No, this was, this was based on a board member's request to know.
How many?
Who was left out.
Okay.
So we have full-time that didn't meet the deadline. That was 616. And then we have a group of part-time, 349 plus 132. So that's roughly 481 part-time. And then there's another group, which is the substitutes, as well as contracted employees.
So me, I, for the part-time, I think, I think I would like to see a proration-type schedule.
Okay.
That's, that's me. I think if you don't, you don't do, you don't give the same thing across the board if they were not doing the same amount of hours. Yes, they were here, and they were helping us, but I think we have to be smart about that as well. That's just, that's me.
That makes sense, I think.
Yeah, I agree. And what comes to mind with the substitutes is I know last year we gave an increase for the substitute pay.
Yes.
So I'm not sure if a substitute should necessarily, because that, how would you figure out the hours and, you know what I mean, compared to a full-time teacher or the PIRAs and people that have worked there all day, every day? So.
I think we could come up with a recommendation if it's your desire to do that.
Yeah, if you don't mind coming up with a recommendation.
That would be good, because some substitutes probably had more of a part-time commitment, and then other substitutes were with us, you know, through the duration as long-term subs and things like that. So that recommendation would really be helpful. And when I look at this, these categories, what I'm seeing is, is that we had 616 full-time employees that didn't meet, we had to have a deadline.
Right.
So 616 full-time that did not meet May 26. We have 132 part-time that did not meet.
748.
May 26. Okay. And that's where the 748 comes from. The substitutes, I believe we have some direction for you on that, in terms of how many were part-time and how many were full-time, to help us figure that out. And then Board Member Browning, are you with us so far? Board Member Browning?
Yes. Yes, hello?
Are you with us so far on this conversation?
Yes. Yes, I am with you. Can you, do you copy?
Yep, sure do. Thank you.
Okay. I have a, I have a question with, with a board member Cummings, his mic is not working properly coming across. I can hear the other parties, but his mic breaks up incredibly.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I bet you go out in front. Thank you.
This is not endorsement from Verizon's phone either.
Yes, five by five. And I do have a, I do have a question, Chair, when it's appropriate.
Sure, go ahead.
All right. The, and I'm, I'm looking, I have a question in reference to impacted individuals, and since we're looking in a rather broad spectrum here and including, I'd like to consider the hardship and problems that are associated with our central figure, the students. And I'm just, I'm just wondering. I know we don't pay students, we get paid for students, but families and students have gone through this epidemic and just exactly like and incurred all sorts of issues. And so if we've got bonuses and we've got these funds coming from the state, I would like to see, at least ask the question, is there a way, and it may be legal, is there a way to include these impacted people? Because these families have gotten beat up, and just like everybody has. So I put that out as a question to the board.
Can I say something?
Thank you, Board Member Browning. And I'm sure that our staff would, would welcome your ideas as they put together a proposal to further refine this. So it would be helpful if you would come up with your suggestions and then share those perhaps at the, your next superintendent briefing or with Teresa Boston Ellis directly. It's an interesting concept.
Yeah, thank you. And I really, I really do, I feel strongly to ask the board so that there are no surprises, because it, and especially just to let the community know that we do care, and we really do care. And we care about all levels, and to be as inclusive as possible, especially when you're handing out money.
Very true, sir. Board Member Cummings?
I wasn't quite sure. I think what I'm hearing from him is that we were kind of giving something out to the community. That was taken care of through the past administration in Washington DC and the current administration in Washington DC, where they gave stimulus checks to families and several times, and to those children that were affected. So I'm not sure.
They're getting a tax break too now.
And a tax break. Correct. So I'm not sure if this is appropriate, what we're talking about now would be appropriate, because this is for schools and different things of the such. So I'm thinking, I think we're kind of going on two different lanes, coming out to, driving down two different lanes on the highway, so.
I agree.
Yes, sure. And that's a great, that's a great, that's the kind of, you know, discussion that I think is so important, because we all, including all 7,000 of our employees, were included in the Washington effort. So, you know, maybe we should take that into consideration in the big picture. But that's exactly right. I would just, I, it's so valuable, and I almost never get to talk to you, sir, and it was so valuable to get your input. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Vice Chair King. I don't know.
I was just saying that I agree with Mr. Cummings. I'm not sure that that's where I would like, I think that is not our land at this point. I think ours is taking care of our employees with this, and then just even at that.
Okay, all right. Yes, it, we, I don't know that there's anyone left in the world that hasn't been impacted in some way by this virus, and there certainly has been global efforts to provide relief at every level to every single citizen. I'm thinking about the rent forgiveness or delay that help people in multiple ways. And I know that we all know what's best for kids is to have healthy, returning, loyal employees that we are able to retain and keep them coming back under very extraordinary circumstances. So it's clear to me that this is a very caring and passionate board, and we don't ever want to think about leaving anyone out. And so I appreciate the spirit of the conversation. Thank you, Ms. Boston Ellis. Did you have anything else for us today?
Not, not at this time.
Not at this, not at 9:21 on a Thursday morning.
Can I ask, what is the takeaway?
The takeaway for me is that we will move forward with, coming up with a recommendation to you for those employees who were excluded originally from not only the governor's allocation, but also those who were excluded from the ESER II based on not meeting the criteria. That, that is what I'm.
However, we are clear on the May 26 deadline, correct? Or not?
Yeah, I'm clear on that. Are you?
Not including them in the proposal, is what I have.
So all things would have to be, they were gainfully employed, part-time, full-time, as of May 26.
Right. Part-time, full-time, or temporary.
As of May 26.
As of May 26.
So we're looking at all employees, all contractors, all, like, because the list?
That's what I heard. Substitute, contractors.
Right, so is that what we're looking at? Like, every single one, whether they're contracted out from another employee, player?
Wouldn't the contracted employees have their own pot to pull from or eligible for different things?
I am not aware of them, but I know that we have different pots, like the initial item did not include the VPK teachers, the ones that were not, the K-12. But the early learning received money to provide to.
Right.
Our pre-K teachers. So I'm not aware about the contractors. We have some single companies, so it could be one speech therapist at a particular school, or it could be speech therapists that work for a company.
Right, and that's where it gets a little bit sticky, because we certainly want to make sure that our employees are covered, if they're not covered in any other way. I think about our speech-language pathologists, our OTs. We have some still that are under our umbrella that are our employees, correct?
Yes, we have some that are our employees. We have some that they're a single company.
Right, right. They're an independent contractor.
Correct. And then we have some who work for a company.
Right.
So there's.
Right. And the independent contractors, I feel like by their own choice.
Yeah.
Are not under our umbrella. And I remember conversations over the years where, and correct me if I'm wrong, but that we were, at one point, you know, encouraging them, when there were positions available, to come onboard with us. And as a contracted employee, I think they earn more or charge more, if I'm not mistaken, than maybe what our employees get paid, but then you've got the offset of the benefits. But my point being is that, you know, I have my own business too. And, and there's benefits to that, and there's also not anybody paying you a bonus because you only work for yourself, so you create your own bonus.
Right. I, I'm sorry. Me personally, I think contracted employees are a separate entity. They're not our, that's just me. They're not our employees.
Right. We're trying to do this for our employees, and also as a retention tool, in my mind, is how I see it. You know, we recognize the value of their hard work and their extra effort, and that's what good companies do. You know, they acknowledge them. So hopefully that will encourage others to come onboard with us, because we do our best to treat them as well as we possibly can, including paying them when they weren't even working during the shutdown.
Because what I'm thinking, I'm sorry, what I'm thinking of, when you say contracted employees, consultants and those people that we contract with, are we going to pull all those folk in? And I just can't see that. I can't see it.
Okay, so the takeaway again is, you had to meet the deadline.
Yes.
You had to be our employee.
Yes.
Whether part-time, temporary, or full-time.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
That's coming from this board member, Vice Chair King?
Yes.
I think you're going to come with a proposal for ones that.
Yes.
Proration.
For prorating for, based on the time they actually were working.
And what will, so are we going to prorate the $1,000, or if it's part-time, like, are we going to, because they're a part-time employee, like, do we want to give a, I don't know what word I'm trying to use.
Just the same amount, part-time?
Right. So are you looking, if they're a part-time, are we going to give them $1,000? Or are we going to, like you said, prorate it and look at it and say, okay, you're part-time, so maybe, I don't know?
Our discussions, the chiefs and I, looked at a certain dollar amount for part-time.
Okay. Straight across the board.
Yes.
Okay, and that would probably be.
And the same for substitutes. So we will bring that back to you formally.
Okay, thank you. Right, right. Because where it gets a little sticky is, like, paraprofessionals are considered part-time, or they're considered full-time, but they might not work a full 40 hours a week. But they're, you know, I'm thinking of classroom paraprofessionals.
We're not gauging it on the number of hours they work.
Thank you.
We're gauging it on, based on whether or not they were working 526.
Right, right.
And the other thing I want to bring to your attention is that there are employees who have left, but they were employed May 26. So they would get the bonus as well. But it would become an accounts payable type check. Okay?
So Board Member Browning, are you there?
Hello?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Yes, okay, thank you. Yes, I would like to, I'd like to weigh in on that, especially to, to Mr. Cummings' comment, and that is that, are we saying then that, or have we considered the idea that if you did already receive funds from Washington, which is why we're excluding the families of children that are impacted, is that a deal breaker then? Or is this actually a, a sort of a wage, a payment, a, you know, part of, part of kind of an implied income for workers? And if that's the case, I think we should think and think about actually paying people and not keep coming up with a lot of different bonuses. Now, this is a general thought, but all these bonuses in paying for various activities that are outside of the scope of what's going on, like, life is tough, you have to get a vaccination, or life is tough, you know, the flu season was extra-heavy, or we had a pandemic, pandemic. I would just, I would really like to come down on the side of actually paying our people and contracting with them so they know what's coming up. They don't have to wait for someone to feel sorry for them, and, you know, pardon the expression, but, you know, that they're constantly in a hardship situation. I'd like to, I'd like to, you know, hear comments from the board, you know, from that perspective, because if we're just giving away money, and, boy, out to contractors and all these people, they all got money from Washington. They got money from, you know, in various ways, in various amounts, depending on their, on their tax write-offs and what have you.
Yes, sir. We're not including contractors in this, and very fortunately, and very soon, we'll be having our salary negotiations coming up. I agree with you, sir, that we want our employees to know that they're being compensated at a level that's going to want them to keep coming back year after year in typical years. And I think we can all agree, this has been a very atypical, almost two years. So we're working to acknowledge them for that and make our other employees whole that weren't made whole by the $1,000 that our principals and classroom teachers received. So that's, that's really the whole goal behind this. But great points. Thank you.
Well, I see to catch up with that one. And these things, these things do, they do tend to snowball. I'd also like to say that, that for my part on this issue. I'd also like to say that, for my part, on this issue, that this is not the way to retain someone, you retain someone with their salary. It's just that simple. And to constantly be thinking that our people are underpaid or improperly paid is just, you know, for this board member, that's not the way business is conducted, in my experience. And I would just like to weigh in on the side of, you know, paying people, having a contract, and not start a precedent of this type of extra payments because we feel bad and we think we're underpaying. Because I don't think we're underpaying, or if we are, let's change that.
I think the goal is to acknowledge an unprecedented level of commitment. So why don't we leave that right there, and we'll move forward with the rest of your briefing, if you have more for us, or are we good?
That's it for, that's it for Ms. Bostonos. I do have just one simple question on this item. When it comes back, is it the desire of the board for it to be during a briefing, or do we need a separate topic item under work session?
It can be underbriefed.
Are you?
I think.
Are you comfortable with it being underbriefing? I just.
Yeah, so that way you're not, so whenever, you might have it ready by next.
When we're ready. Thank you.
So when you're ready, I'm going to.
I think when you're, when you're ready, though, it should go on as a separate topic so that the community knows that we're going to discuss it again.
Okay, so a separate topic item?
I would think.
And we'll add it to, as a topic. Thank you.
Okay, certainly an item of interest. All right, thank you.
Thank you. And then, so the final briefing is from Mr. Knight on the Howard Academy. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Knight.
Good morning, Mrs. Throer, Mrs. King, Mr. Powers, Reverend Cummings, Ms. Prestapino, and Dr. Gullett. Appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today on the Howard Academy progress. That's the project where we're replacing bathrooms and infrastructure, including structure. As of yesterday, the contractor had completed all the walls, all the floors, all the ceilings. The toilets are in, the sinks are in, the water's running. Yesterday, they were putting in toilet partitions in the women's restroom. They should finish that today, barring any sort of unforeseen issue. And they'll start on the men's today and finish tomorrow. Last thing that goes in after the toilet partitions are the toilet accessories, such as the toilet tissue dispensers, the mirrors, the paper towel holders are there, waiting for the crew to get out of the bathroom, so that the next crew can come in and put those things in behind it. So theoretically, by Monday, the women's bathroom will be fully operational. I understand some staff's going to start to move in next week. Shouldn't be an issue using the facilities. There will still be some touch-up going on. There's always touch-up paint. And the contractor does want the opportunity to come in and shampoo the rugs, at least around where the bathrooms were, where they were working, make sure they get any deep-set-in dust out of the carpets. There is still a little bit of sod work to do. It's not going to impact walking on the site. Tomorrow, they are going to pave the areas they cut trenches for in order to put the new sanitary sewer and water lines in through the campus. It's been lime-rotted. It's waiting on the paving. All the sidewalks have been installed, or reinstalled, I should say. The last thing to do is about mid-October, the final doors show up. There will be temporary doors during that time, so you'll be able to use the restrooms. But we wanted to match the doors that are inside that hallway because of the historic significance of the building. We didn't want to just throw up something that looked too modern. Those are coming in about mid-October, and that'll be the last thing to do at that campus as far as the restrooms are concerned. But lights are on, water's running, bacteriological tests passed last week, final inspection on plumbing the other day, so I even tried the sinks myself, and everything is working. So should be no problem for the staff moving in. It's just there'll be a couple of people lingering around into next week, like I said, to do touch-up work and final cleaning in and around the folks that are, I guess, moving back in. So unless there's any questions, that's the update we've got.
When are they starting to move back in?
I believe they're moving in Monday, the 27th.
And that's par, and that's par to them doing the shampooing and stuff?
Yes. Unfortunately, they just.
Why? I'm asking, I'm.
Well, we, you may.
I would have preferred they move in after they get it all set, because I know when I shampoo my carpet, I don't want anybody walking on it, just tracking up, so.
Right. Yeah, it'll be damp, and that's a bit of a challenge. We were hoping that maybe they'd allow us to clean. Our folks might be coming in this weekend and beat them to it, is what I understand. But I'll defer to somebody else as far as the move in.
Yeah, I agree.
Good morning, everyone. So I have been working with Dr. Reese on the move back in, and they are quite ready to move back in on Monday. The shampooing that Mr. Knight is referring to is isolated around the restrooms. Our custodial staff is doing deep cleaning. They've been doing spot cleaning, but this weekend they're doing the final deep cleaning. So because that is a small portion of shampooing around the bathrooms, they are still wanting to move back into that. And it's all set up with warehouse and everything for a Monday move back.
Okay.
And they do also still have the restrooms over in the cafeteria if there's concerns about the shampooing around those immediate bathrooms.
Because I'm asking that because if they're going to, they're going to clean it, and they're still using those restrooms, this is going to look as messy as ever. I mean, how long, if they clean it, how long is it going to take for it to dry and?
Probably about a half a day or so. I'm not quite sure, you know, how long it's going to take in the setup, but theoretically, you figure a half a day to do the whole thing and dry in the meantime.
So will it create that much of a problem if they delayed the move in till after they cleaned it? I'm asking.
Well, from a logistics way, they've already started working with the warehouse and setting up times for pickup and returning staff in. So consider Monday a move-in day. People are going to be in and out, and we can just simply, if those, that's the day that they're shampooing the rugs, block that area off, and people would use the cafeteria for reference.
Thanks. There's always a deeper explanation.
Yeah. Chair Throer?
Yes, sir.
Yes, a question for Dr., Mr. Knight. Would you, what is the access to that, to the Howard facility? What is the, what is the access to that property? Do we have fences? Do we have gates? Do we have, what do we have? How do you get in there?
The entire perimeter has got a fence, and there is a fence on the north side, which is primarily used by the folks that have children attending the pre-kindergarten activities there in Building Three. And on the south side is another fencing gate. The whole fence, the fence encompasses the property, but there is another gate on the south side, mostly for employees of that building. And it'll be back open again with those that have access through a key.
And so you'll have a key for the community to get into the, to the center? Is that, just sort of describe to me how that will work.
Well, I believe how that facility functions is that the staff opens the gates, and they remain open during the day, during daylight hours, business hours, and then are closed at some time. I'm not really up to speed on the operational times of that, but the community would have access, same as the staff, as far as once that facility has got all the people back.
So people coming and going, okay, I got it. How about the HBAC? How, what's the, just a short report on that. What's the status? And have we done anything to mitigate it? We got any test things going there, or we got anything going on in terms of the COVID situation?
No, it's going to be treated like any of the other facilities. The work that we are doing is strictly on the bathrooms, so the air conditioning wasn't included as part of the renovations in the bathrooms, except for the mechanical exhaust systems. I believe our maintenance folks have already gone back and taken a look to make sure, just like we would in any opening day of school in August, to make sure that everything is functioning properly above and beyond what we're working on. And custodial will do their typical deep cleaning, I guess, over the weekend, also including the COVID mitigation program.
Or, do you have any, any sense of, of the, you know, just quality of the air, that type of thing? I'm just interested, as we march through buildings, especially when we're doing a little bit of extra work, what's your sense of that?
We don't see any issues. It is an old building and has been, like a number of our facilities. But there's nothing that outstanding at that facility, above and beyond the work we're doing and completing as we speak. So as far as air quality, certainly not aware of any issues. We've been in there, we even did some sample monitoring during construction. They had containment packages all around both bathrooms consisting of plastic that was attached to the ceiling and floors to minimize any sort of dust particulate escaping while they were doing their work. But as far as the air systems, like I noted, the maintenance folks come in, they do their work in terms of making sure the filters are new and everything is clean. The custodial staff will do their COVID mitigation, and their typical deep cleaning on any facility that we would reopen, say, if this was August and we were reopening all 50 schools. But we're not aware of any other air quality issue. And like I said, we did some random sampling just for kicks during the process, and outside of a little bit of dust particulate, there was nothing else found there. So not aware of any issues, not anticipating any issues with air quality there, above and beyond what we would normally have at any other facility.
Thank you. No need for, no need for humidifiers, no, no window leaks, no roof leaks, that type of thing. I guess that's where.
Well, that I can't speak to, because we were limited in scope to just the restrooms. Just keep in mind, it's an old building, and so I'm not going to tell you that there isn't a roof leak or a rattling fan in an air conditioning system. That's more of an operational item, but like I noted, we're not aware of anything. What tends to happen when school starts back up is somebody does notice a spot on a rug or on a tile. We went through that building yesterday, went up and down the halls and replaced any tiles that looked shabby, whether they were included in the work or not. Our contractor went ahead and replaced them. They don't match because the existing tiles are so old, they don't make that style anymore. But we've gone through and said, this spruce place up, whether it's connected to the bathroom work or not. So we went through yesterday and replaced some ceiling tiles, not necessarily because there's any leaks we're know of, just sometimes they bow or they look shabby, or there's been a stain from 20 years ago that maybe got missed in the last go-around. And so we took care of a few cosmetic things. But it just simply, it's an old building, and so just like your old car, it might run fine one day and stutter a little bit the next. And I'm, it's possible that certainly there'll be somebody finding something in the building, a loose doorknob or something, but not anything that we're aware of that would stop anybody from occupying the building.
Thank you, Mr. Knight. And as far as the air quality is concerned, I think that's part of a larger presentation, a little further down our agenda today, as we continue to focus on what we can do in all of our schools and district buildings to make our air quality better.
Yes, yes, that's true.
Thank you. All right, anything else for the good of the cause? If not, we'll keep moving.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Knight.
So we're ready to begin. Madam Chair, we're ready to move on with the agenda. And as a reminder, we have two of our Department of Health representatives on the call, if you'd like to hear from them first for COVID-19?
Yes, that'd be great. Thank you.
Will they be able to hear us?
Board Member Browning, can you still hear us, sir?
Yes, I can. 555.
Okay, great. And until you're ready to speak, if you would keep your line muted, that will help us eliminate background noise and make it easier for us to hear overall. Thank you.
Absolutely, yes, ma'am. Will do.
Appreciate it.
Ms. Jurgens, Ms. Duncan, if you are able to provide us an update, as we discussed yesterday on our Department of Health call, we appreciate your being here with us today.
Hi, good morning. This is Sherri Duncan. I'm the Assistant Administrator with the Florida Department of Health in Marion County. And we have Kristy Jurgens, our Community Health Director, here with us as well.
Good morning, ladies.
Good morning. So we'd like to go ahead and just give you a current COVID update on our levels in the community. So last week, we saw 1,543 positive cases, which made our positivity rate 17.9%. That positivity rate is down from 22.5% the previous week. We have been seeing a steady decline in the positivity rate since August 26. We are in what CDC considers a high transmission threshold for community transmission. And currently, 61% of individuals 12 and older in Marion County have been vaccinated.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions from the board?
What about hospitalizations? Are they down as well?
Hospitalizations have been down.
Sorry, did you say hospitalizations are continuing to decline?
Yes, ma'am.
Great news.
Chair, Chair Throer, Don Browning. Could we, could she elaborate a little bit on the, on the improving trend? I know we're all trying to, to see the light at the end of the tunnel. Elaborate a little bit on the improving trend, and does that link in at all to what the Surgeon General and the Governor were saying yesterday?
I didn't hear the details of what the Surgeon General and the Governor mentioned yesterday. I'm sorry, I'm having difficulty hearing.
Okay, thank, thank you. Just, I'm just looking for a little expanded report, if you can, on the improving trend.
I would say the numbers speak for themselves, and our ladies are here to show the latest hard data with us. As far as the Surgeon General and the Governor, I'm sure they're very aware of the improving data as well, and perhaps that's guiding some of their emergency orders.
Yeah, okay, all right. And that's Chair Throer speaking.
Thank you. Anything, anything else for Ms. Duncan or Ms. Jurgens? Dr. Gullett?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Ms. Duncan and Ms. Jurgens, again. And through our Department of Health conversation yesterday, and this is a good time to bring this up, I wanted to share publicly again that we have the emergency rule, 64 DER 21-15, which updated the 2112 previously. And essentially, what that allows for is for parent choice of student quarantines. So for an asymptomatic student, they may choose to have their student attend school, or they may quarantine at home. The student may quarantine at home not to exceed seven days. And so we talked about that yesterday on our call, excuse me, and that is an effect, there go the allergies, excuse me, an effect immediately. And so we're working through the logistics. We communicated with our schools. But I want to thank the Department of Health for that collaboration as we work through those students who are out currently on quarantine and bringing them back and navigating the nuance of this. But just wanted to reiterate again, the new emergency rule, parent choice for student quarantines for asymptomatic students, that they have the choice of either sending them to school, or they may quarantine not to exceed seven days.
And these are asymptomatic, currently asymptomatic students that have had a documented exposure?
Correct. They are direct contacts, direct contacts. And the rule does not apply to adults, only to students that are direct contacts.
So for clarity, asymptomatic, asymptomatic student who has had direct contact can return to school if the parent so chooses?
As long as they don't have symptoms.
Asymptomatic, yes.
Asymptomatic, correct. That is correct.
But as soon as they show symptoms, they're back out?
That's correct. As soon as the symptoms are present, then they are expected to follow the protocols for being at home and saying, "Helmeth are sick." Correct.
And we started complying with this, we, I was on the call yesterday, and it was at 4 o'clock. And school started at some schools as early as 7:40 this morning. So we are already implementing this new emergency order. That is correct, right?
That is correct, absolutely.
And I'm thinking that we might be hearing how that's going so far this morning.
Yes, our area superintendents are here, and when they do step forward to share their COVID-19 updates, they'll be able to elaborate on that. I do want to shed some caution for anyone out there that might think, well, I have a child who's sitting at home. Again, this happened very quickly, and we did our due diligence to work with the Department of Health yesterday and to communicate to schools. But we do recognize collectively with the Department of Health, there'll be some, some certain circumstances that we have to navigate through in bringing them back to school and making sure that they are asymptomatic. And so, but we are complying with the emergency order. Just be patient with us as we work through those cases. Thank you.
Gracing compassion.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett.
So we are ready to move on, then, with area superintendent. So Ms. Kinerd is here, and she will begin that process to continue. Thank you.
Before she's.
Chair, if I may.
Hold on just a second, Board Member Browning. Go ahead, Dr. K, go ahead, Mr. Cummings. Okay, go ahead, sir.
Yes, I'd just like to give an enormous hip, hip, hurrah to the superintendent's comments. It's the kind of the light at the end of the tunnel that I know we're all looking for. And wow, what a wonderful report. That's incredible. Thank you.
Board Member Cummings?
So with this executive order, we're still contact tracing, everything is still going forward as before?
That is, yes. Board Member Cummings, that is correct. Everything else continues. And so this is just another piece of that contact tracing. So that's why we have to adjust, from our operations standpoint, we have to adjust with the Department of Health how that fits into the protocols and how we document that. Correct.
And I'm just stating this for clarity, this is a way to try to keep kids in the classroom with less obstructions.
That's correct. That's correct.
Thank you, Board Member Cummings. Good morning, Ms. Kinerd.
Good morning, Chair Thrower, Vice Chair King, Board Members, Superintendent Gullett, Attorney Powers, and Ms. Prestapino. And just to comment back on the school perspective from the new emergency order from Department of Health, we did certainly, as area superintendents, communicate with our principals yesterday afternoon as soon as we could after the Department of Health call, as well as we had optional virtual meetings with them this morning already, so that we were able to talk through with our principals, as well as we had several assistant principals on the call that serve as the COVID liaisons at their schools, so that we were able to start problem solving through any of the issues that they already were asking us about. And certainly to reiterate, the contact tracing is very clearly still continuing and being done, as is the contact of the parent or guardian of any students that are direct contacts to a positive case, so that the parent guardian is aware that they do certainly can quarantine their child or not, and that they do have that choice. And the principals and assistant principals are working through today, also in addition to Mr. Christian's call that went out last night on Sky Alert, to try to reach those families of students that are right now quarantining at home because of direct contact. Again, just to reiterate, as long as everyone's asymptomatic. Okay, at the last work session, area superintendents were asked to come back with additional details of the possibility of volunteers and really connecting this possibility to the transmission risk levels. Wanted to begin with describing the types of volunteers that we have had in the past at our schools and how they might serve our schools, especially for the public. Volunteers can certainly be, but are not limited to, reading pals with the United Way Group, the Good News Club, mentoring our students. We have volunteers that come in and assist with our health screenings that happen in our elementary and middle schools. We have volunteers that come in as part of a grandparent book challenge. Certainly, we have volunteers that come in and mentor and read with our students in small reading groups, book fair volunteers, additional school help, lamination. But the bottom line, in most of these cases, the volunteers are working in small groups or one-on-one with students in close proximity. And at this time, Mr. Frazier is going to come up and outline this transmission risk chart that we will have up on the screen as well.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Frazier.
Good morning, Chair Thrower, Vice Chair King, Board Members, Dr. Gullett, Attorney Powers, and Ms. Prestapino. The transmission chart shown here demonstrates the high, substantial, moderate, and low community transmission risk levels for COVID-19. This is the same chart that we used for our mask resolution. Just to remind the public that the target identified in the mask resolution is to have the community reach the substantial risk category for both criteria and to stay there for two weeks in the substantial category. Currently, we are still in the high transmission risk. We discussed what volunteers might look like using this transmission risk, and we could use the same criteria that we already have in place for the mask resolution. Thus, we would permit volunteers, once we reach the substantial transmission risk level, and stay there at that level for two weeks. We will continue to have conversations with the Department of Health on a regular basis and to discuss volunteers and strategies at that time.
This may be a question for Ms. Duncan or Ms. Jurgens. How close are we currently to getting into the substantial category? And one reason why this feels even more urgent to me when it comes to volunteers is that we're operating under two different criteria for our teachers and staff as compared to our children. And in the real world of day-to-day school, it's great that we have kids on campus that are asymptomatic and ready to learn, but as long as we still have staff that's being put out under different criteria, that creates concern for me as far as being able to serve these students as effectively as possible and also maintaining the social distancing and all of those things, those layers of mitigations that we know are helpful. So just back to my question, Ms. Duncan and Ms. Jurgens, how close are we to moving from high to substantial?
So it would depend based on which of the measures you're using. There are two measures. There's one that speaks to the rate of new cases per 100,000 individuals in the past seven days, and then there's one that goes by the percent of positive tests within the past seven days. Based on current trends, I would estimate that we'll probably within two to three weeks get to the percent positivity rate, where we would be in the substantial category. Now, it's harder to say with our rate per 100,000 individuals how soon we would get down to there. We're currently, for the most recent reporting week, we were at 414 cases per 100,000 individuals. And the substantial marker is 99 cases per 100,000 individuals.
Yes, ma'am. And we're seeing that chart up here, and that's what we're using as far as the criteria for our face covering resolutions. So that's why I'm asking. Our volunteers are just so critical to our mission, but at the same time, I understand that, you know, we want to keep everybody as safe as possible. Thank you.
And now, you're welcome.
Did you have something else?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Looking at what, where we are, we're 17.9%, and then she said 400. I think she said we're at 400 or 100,000. You're looking at about three to four weeks, not two weeks. Am I doing good math, Frazier? About four weeks, not two weeks.
Well, especially if we reach both criteria.
Yeah, okay.
We might get to the percent positive sooner, but that means we're only half of there, Vice Chair King?
Yeah. So I know we're talking about this executive order, and our ball has moved a little bit. So, you know, as a board member that was sitting here, you know, a month and a half ago, and, you know, we saw very low numbers during the summer, and we came in with no mask and really pretty much not mitigating or anything. So now we know that students could be potentially sitting in a home with sick parents, sick siblings, and they can still come to school. And if we're looking at those substantially high numbers, they're still high, but then we're allowing students that have been exposed in schools without any mitigation or practicing, and we're going to let off that a little bit? I have to say, I'm kind of concerned because basically, we got spanked last month when we thought things were low and we put our guards down. I almost would like to revisit our substantial high risk with, you know, now that we're allowing sick or potentially, you know, asymptomatic students and then taking down a mitigation practice. I think, I think we just need to be very cautious and think about what we're doing because our number one goal is to keep our, everyone in our school system, everyone safe from COVID. And that's where my thoughts, I'm just looking at that and throwing it out. I don't know what you guys think, if that's something we maybe should revisit and think about. Is it the right time to put our guards down? Because our game has changed at this point, and I don't know what it's going to look like. So I don't know what you guys are thinking.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Yes. I would, from my perspective, I would say that following the Governor and following the Surgeon General in general terms and following the trend, we aren't putting our guard down. And I want, I want to accent the concept that we are educating, and we've really got to go with the experts, because there's a lot of what they call fear, doubt, and uncertainty out there. And like Roosevelt said, you know, we only have fear itself. Fear itself is our biggest problem, I'm paraphrasing. But we really got to march in the direction, and when the Surgeon General says it, I want to go with it, and I don't like the idea. I don't want to support, not don't like, I don't want to support a double standard if we can ever get to a single standard. And we have a high standard for our children, and I would like to see that same standard prevailed, if it can. If there's some reason why it can't, okay, but I would sure like to know what that is and ask that question. And just get us as close as we can to this positive outcome that's coming.
Thank you, Board Member Browning. Vice Chair King?
Can I speak to that?
Yes, sir.
A month and a half ago, as a board member, I did trust the Governor and his decision. And I saw exactly what happened, and we had high transmission rate. We had, we lost employees. We had very ill employees, and we've had very ill students. We saw transmission in the classrooms, and we did not see that last year. So I am not living by fear. I am trying to use, I am going to use my common sense and do my best to protect the most vulnerable citizens in our community. And that's where I stand. I, again, I think our ball has changed. I can look at numbers, I can look at statistics and see what happens when we put our guard down. And I'm not comfortable not putting up any mitigation practices to protect everyone. And I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you, Vice Chair King. Board Member Cummings?
I concur with Board Member King. The ball, the game changed yesterday, actually, a little bit with the Governor's executive order. And it's almost as if we're kind of taking the fence up, when we should have been keeping the fence there until we can get down to where we want to get to. We, I think, a month and a half ago, when we came up and said that we want to get down to a certain level before we start removing things or loosening things, I think we need to stand firm on that, that point. We're at 17.9%. I think we have to be at 9.9% to start loosening. We don't want to go backward. We need to be going forward. And I stand with that same reasoning as well. The numbers are showing that we're where we need to be. We're still higher than the national average of transmission, and we have to use some common sense on this one, I think.
So just to be clear, we're looking still at welcoming back volunteers when our, when both criteria go into the substantial. And both, right?
Both.
And for two weeks.
And for two weeks. And caring for two weeks. Yes. So I agree that this is likely today, not the time to change that stance, because we do have a new variable here. And how about we wait and see how this affects us? Delta variant raged up very quickly, and in many other countries, it has decreased almost as quickly. And hopefully, that trend will continue. Let's pray that it does. But until we see the hard data from that, from our health professionals and our partners at the local health department, I'm good with where we are right now. I welcome the input if Ms. Duncan and Ms. Jurgens are still on the line. Are you still there, ladies?
Yes, we're still here.
Would welcome your feedback on this conversation.
So I mean, I think that's a very acceptable approach, looking to get both of your measures in the substantial range before you make any adjustments to that. One thing to note, when you're looking at pulling those volunteers back into the school, a key component needs to be that, you know, if one of them were to test positive, that they're able to share that so that we're able to contact trace that.
Absolutely. Great point.
I can also share with you that the most recent time we were in that substantial or below category for both of those measures was from May 9th through July 8th of this year.
Yep. The beautiful summer. And we are working hard to get back to that. I think a couple of, thank you, ladies, and I think a couple other things that we have in our favor is that we do know how to mitigate risk now. We have gotten pretty good at that in our schools. I continue to be concerned about employees that are out and classrooms having to be combined. It makes it difficult, more difficult to contact trace, it makes it more difficult to distance kids. I'm encouraged by feedback I'm getting from families regarding the Governor's executive order. Pretty much every family member that has reached out to me has said that they still intend, you know, to keep their children home and err on the side of caution. And that's the whole grace and compassion. We've talked about that for almost two years. But what does it look like in action? We all want this to go away. And if it means that we need to continue to be as diligent as we possibly can within the confines of all of the mandates that we're under, then that's what we're, that's what I suggest we do. The weather is getting cooler now, and I've seen a lot of examples of great creative instruction occurring outside the classroom, in the fresh air. I know, again, we're going to be hearing more about, you know, air filtration options moving forward for our classrooms, you know, the hand washing practices, emphasizing all of those on a daily basis. I know at some schools, they call it gel-in, gel-out. You know, it's doing those multi-mitigation practices with fidelity that are going to continue to drop these numbers. And so I feel like the mission is clear. You know, we just have a new variable. So the more we can boost up what we're already doing and continue to monitor, then we'll see what the conversation is next time we're all together. All right. Thank you, sir. Dr. Gullett, was there anything else?
No, I think we've concluded everything from COVID-19 today.
Okay. Is there any public comment? All right, hearing none. Ms. Duncan and Ms. Jurgens, thank you as always for partnering with us on the medical side. We couldn't do it without your support.
Thank you. Happy to help. Thank you.
Have a great day.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Yes. And so I, I'm very encouraged by all the discussion. And I want to, I want to make a point that we are not going to go from responsible to irresponsible or from, you know, safe to problematic. And that's encouraging. And that's just the message that has been coming to me, that I see. And I'm looking to the Surgeon General as a leader of all of the health organizations and our primary input. So it's just encouraging. I think at the end of this, we'll still be highly responsible, absolutely top, top-flight, careful, absolutely at our post and getting the job done in the most responsible way. Never, as we tone it down, as things get better, will it be moving to irresponsible. And my, I will not support irresponsible.
Thank you, Board Member Browning. Okay, moving on to the annual Public Education Foundation Report with Ms. Megamo. Good morning.
Good morning, school board members, Chair Thrower, Ms. King, Attorney Powers, Reverend Cummings, Dr. Gullett, and Ms. Prestapino. Thank you for allowing me some time this morning to share updates from the Public Education Foundation. This has been a challenging and unique year, as you are aware of, and we've also had many changes.
Yeah.
But it has, and hello, Mr. Browning as well, who's on the call.
Yep. Just remember to mute your line, sir. Just remember to mute, just remember to mute your line, sir, when you're not speaking.
So this past year at the foundation, yes, it has had challenges and changes, but it has been a year of many opportunities. And I am excited to share what those opportunities looked like with each of you this morning. The mission of the Public Education Foundation is to financially and materially support Marion County Public Schools, its students and its teachers. And just a quick history, we were founded in nineteen eighty-eight as our own 501(c)(3) charitable organization. And we are the direct support organization for Marion County School District. During today's presentation, I'm going to talk with you about what our support, the school district, actually looks like. These are not all encompassing of a list. This is the, some of our signature programs, starting with Black Stallion Reading, Golden Apple Teacher Recognition, Grants for Great Ideas, School Business Partnerships, School Related Employee of the Year, Senior Scholarships, the Silver River Science Lab, Take Stock in Children's Scholarships, Teacher-to-Bee Scholarships, and our Tools for Teaching program. So let's start with our Black Stallion Reading Project. And I know that our school board members are familiar with this new initiative. It's a partnership with the Ocala Horse Alliance. And I saw many of you at the kickoff event, which was held at WEC this past spring. Reverend, Reverend Cummings and Moses, no one can ever forget.
No.
So our foundation is proud to be partnering with the Ocala Horse Alliance. We are the fiscal agent for this five-year literacy initiative with our district. Over the next five years, this project will harness the power and encourage fifth grade, fourth grade students to read, set goals, achieve, and become aware, aware of job and career opportunities in the equestrian industry. And we are the horse capital of the world. This will link the program to schools, to local horse farms, and provide rewards and incentives for students to achieve their best. This past year, we provided sixteen thousand dollars in support for this initiative. And next, the foundation's Golden Apple Teacher Recognition Program, where we honor and reward excellence in the teaching profession. Each year, each, our schools select their school-based Rookie and Teacher of the Year, who then continue on to an extensive portfolio, interview, and also observation process. Pictured here are our finalists from our Golden Apple Caravan, which was this past ring, this past spring. Our Teacher of the Year, pictured on the left, Christine Fernandez from Shady Hill Elementary. She taught virtual kindergarten and she has her puppet there that she uses during her virtual school lessons. As you know, in the spring, we also converted our Golden Apple Gala, which is the event that we host. It's typically attended by approximately six hundred and fifty community members and school district family. And because of COVID, we wanted to make sure that our teachers felt celebrated but safe. At the time, there was over a twenty percent positivity rate for the pandemic. And so we made the difficult decision to streamline this event and make it a smaller, more intimate affair of approximately fifty of our teachers and school district members. And our finalists are pictured there at the bottom right on the screen. Our Grants for Great Ideas program. This is a program that provides catalysts for change inside our schools, funding for programs and materials that either change the way teachers teach or the way students learn. This past year, the foundation provided sixty-seven thousand dollars in grants for our schools. This is building a community of learners. It is classroom by classroom, teacher by teacher, and student by student. Pictured here is one of this past year's selected Grants for Great Ideas projects. This is Hillcrest School for Exceptional Students. This grant was called Experience the Rainbow Where Science Meets Art. During this grant, students worked on techniques for mixing colors, learning how to dye fabric, learning how the fabric absorbed the products and materials, so they combined science lessons with art. And the teacher who submitted this grant, Zenita Hendry from Hillcrest, she said, "This is a celebration of splashes of color, an exhale of creativity, a burst of inspiration for our whole school to see, and perhaps gleaning hope of a brighter time once this pandemic passes." And you'll see the student's final product, a rainbow tie-dye shirt. "I teach art. What's your superpower?" The fan, foundation grants these wonderful ideas for our teachers to implement. Next, our School Business Partner Program. Our partnerships establish a mutual beneficial relationship between our schools and our teachers and businesses to enhance educational opportunities for our students. We provided a hundred and five thousand dollars this past year through school business partners. And you'll see pictured here is Mel Poole, the Director of Ocala Fiber Network, as he was recognized for partnering with six schools. He was also named the Business Partner of the Year for Marion County. During the past twenty years, I'd like to note, we have had an average of seventeen schools per year without a business partner. And I believe Chair Thrower, from reading off the school board agenda presentation of donations at the last meeting, we are at a hundred percent for the first time in over two decades to have every single school in Marion County have at least one business partner. And I can share, we now are over seventy total business partners. So we are creeping up to getting two per school. We know-
A round of applause for you and your team. I hope I get laryngitis like that again.
We will keep it up as long as we can. Uh, we hope so, too. It's a win-win for our business community to be engaged in our schools and for our schools to feel that level of support. And our School Related Employee, Employee of the Year Recognition Program, to recognize those outstanding education support personnel who contribute to their schools and their communities. We are a part of the recognition process from the time the employees are selected to submitting their portfolios. And then we assist the finalists and the school-related employee each year onto the Florida School Related Employee of the Year selections process. Twenty twenty-one winner Kathy Gotcher. She taught for, at Reddick Collier Elementary, or as a paraprofessional for over thirteen years. And she had shared with her, with our committee in her application, "Her Reddick Collier School is her home. I care about these children and these families as if they were my own because they are. It's more than a job to me, it's a calling." And I'd like to say it's a privilege for our foundation to be a part of recognizing these support personnel who make an impact every day for our schools. Our Senior Scholarship Program, we awarded twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars to twelfth graders throughout Marion County this year. We managed over twenty individual scholarships for those students. Pictured center is Daniel Roberts, started his education at UCF, thanks to the scholarship awarded from our partner Suncoast Credit Union. And that's just one example. Our Silver River Museum, Museum Science Lab, this is a more recent initiative of the foundation and it's a partnership with our school district and also Silver River Museum. This started from an idea from Marion County's twenty twenty Teacher of the Year, Mr. Ewan Hunter. An underutilized portable out at the Silver River Museum gave an opportunity for us to create what is now a state-of-the-art science lab so that all students in science education in our district can one day be a part of accessing this lab. We managed and dispersed fifty-six thousand dollars to support that initiative this past year and more than a hundred and twenty thousand in total during the last two years. And I have breaking news to be able to share with you all this morning about this initiative. As you may know, Mr. Hunter resigned from Marion County School District from Vanguard High School's IB chemistry class this past July. And that was a personal decision, a change in his schedule. Uh, he was no longer needing to be employed full-time due to family matters. And so Mr. Scott Mitchell, Director of the Museum, and I came together and said, "We need Mr. Hunter to still make sure to continue the work being done and to make sure that STEM education stays at the state-of-the-art level we're ready to provide it at." And so this week, Mr. Hunter was hired part-time to work at the Silver River Science Lab. This is an investment of twenty thousand dollars from the foundation, ten thousand dollars from the Silver River Science, Science Museum, and neither of which was using taxpayer funds. So we will be providing that position for the next year. And Mr. Hunter will be a part of helping us ensure that this lab continues the work and the potential it has.
That's so important.
He texted a picture of his new badge to me yesterday saying, "It's official. I've been rehired part-time out at Silver River."
Ms. Megamo, while we're on Silver River, and, and you were mentioning that all students will eventually have this opportunity. And that's really important and it makes me think about, the glass-bottom boats now have a handicapped accessible, uh, boat for, for folks to be able to get on. And, and it does seem to me sometimes that it's a little bit harder to plan for our special needs kids to get out and access these opportunities. But I love the direction that you're going and, and it seems to be matching with the direction that Silver River Park is, is going to try to make that beautiful, beautiful model of, of nature accessible to all of our students. So thank you for that.
Thank you. And I will, um, on that note, one of the first things we did was make that portable ADA accessible, and it has a wheelchair ramp, so.
Thank you so much.
And now to Take Stock in Children, which is one of the foundation's signature programs, helping low-income, at-risk youth achieve their dreams of going to college by providing scholarships, mentors, and hope to ultimately break the cycle of poverty through the gift of education. This past year, we awarded three hundred and sixty thousand dollars to the graduating class of students in Take Stock. We managed one hundred and seventy-six volunteer mentors through the program, three thousand three hundred and fifty mentoring sessions, three hundred and forty-eight total students between middle, high, and the college students that we are still coaching, and a total value of one point nine million dollars in Florida prepaid scholarship assets. A note about the numbers for mentoring sessions. This past year, our mentors could not be in schools, rightfully so. The decision was to not have hundred and seventy-six extra people in our schools during the pandemic. So in order for these mentoring sessions to happen, which is a requirement of the grant, we converted the entire program to virtual mentoring. And that meant that our staff, who are all part-time, offered to be available to monitor and facilitate mentoring sessions starting as early as seven thirty a.m., with the last session ending at seven p.m. Because that's what it took to make sure we met the needs of our students and the volunteers who had offered their time. The Take Stock in Children formula, it identifies students in middle school. And then we select those students and monitor them, mentor them, coach them, ninth through twelfth grade, ultimately awarding them a two-year college scholarship for tuition with the hopes that they come back to Marion County workforce-ready. So what does this actual program impact look like? What are, what's the data? What are the outcomes that we are always, always looking for as we invest money into these programs? Well, if you look at our high school graduation rate and our college enrollment rate, we are at ninety-eight percent graduation rate from high school and ninety-six percent of our students are enrolling in college. And college looks different for everyone. When we say the word college, we mean post-secondary educational opportunities. That may be a certification program, trade program. Yesterday, I had a visit from one of our graduates from Marion Technical College Welding Program. And he is doing extremely well and talking to me about creating a bronze sculpture, bronze apple to place in the hallway at the foundation. So a success story, right? And our success also looks like Leilani Cruz, Westport High School valedictorian this past year. So she's a student we identified in our school district in eighth grade as at-risk and low-income. We matched her with a volunteer mentor. Her mentor was Judge Sarah Ritterhoff. And we coached her all throughout those four and a half years. And she would then stand up to address her class of twenty twenty-one as the valedictorian. This program proves that a household income should not determine a child's outcome in life. A common theme all year long was gratitude and being grateful. Whether it was for the staff and the mentors transitioning to virtual mentoring online, one-on-one, group sessions, the development of a phone app that allowed our mentors and mentees to stay in communication safely, monitored twenty-four hours, and stay in touch with each other. For food and supply drives, for our donor, Robert Boisna Oncology Institute, who provided a brand-new laptop to every student in our twelfth grade. And also the sixteen hundred and seventy-five hours of volunteer time, which is a value of almost fifty thousand dollars in donated time. Our students, our staff were grateful for all of this. And the word grateful pictured in the middle of your presentation, this is actually a collaboration. Fifty-two of our Take Stock students logged in the week of Thanksgiving break to a virtual meeting to talk with our staff and to each identify one word that they were grateful for. Because when we talk about gratitude, it can help us in trying times. Even the students who had experienced loss, whether it was financial loss at home, whether it was a family member affected by the pandemic, they were talking to us about what they still found in their life to be grateful for. And in those fine print, that is a collage of all the words that those students collectively said. So it was their health, it was for love, it was for a roof over their head, it was for family, and it was for their teachers and their schools and their mentors. Our Teacher-to-B program, the purpose of this scholarship is to encourage and support outstanding employees who have the desire to become classroom teachers. Last year, we had five recipients selected for this program for Marion County Public Schools. Three were special needs paraprofessionals, one an instructional paraprofessional, and one a guidance clerk. So we will support them at five hundred dollars per semester for up to five semesters to ultimately complete their bachelor's degree and then be employed as a classroom teacher in our district. Pictured here, we have Lenisha Harris, who's now teaching at Marion Oaks Elementary. On the right, we have Chandra Weeby. She graduated using our scholarship, was teaching at Stanton Weersdale Elementary last year when she was then named Rookie of the Year for her school. So it's truly full, full circle for so many of our scholarship recipients. And this year, I'd like to say, we've had the largest number of applicants come in to become teachers through our foundation. So we are working diligently to discuss how to fund supporting those future educators.
That's wonderful.
And the last program we'll discuss, Tools for Teaching, provides free school supplies through our teachers to ensure all students have the tools necessary to be successful. We provided over seven hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars in school supplies last year with over fifty-six hundred teacher shopping visits to collect those supplies. And of course, we changed the format slightly because of the pandemic. So we had pop-and-drop options where teachers could drive their car up, pop open their trunk, and we put the supplies directly in. We also converted our in-person shopping to be by appointment, which allowed us to keep our numbers manageable, socially distanced, and masked at our stores. And then we also implemented to-go orders. So those teachers at our twenty-one furthest schools from the foundation office have the ability, once a month, to submit an online order. And we will send out a box of elementary supplies or secondary supplies to make sure our students have what they need from their teachers. We survey our teachers each year. Here is a quick snapshot of some of the results from the end of spring. Ninety-two percent of our teachers shared that they have students who come to school without adequate school supplies. But beyond the physical supplies that we are then resourcing to meet that need of those students, what is the bigger picture? What does having access to those supplies truly mean in that classroom? And our teachers responded as such. Fifty-seven percent felt it increased student confidence. Ninety-two percent felt their student assignments were completed more effectively. Fifty-two percent said their grades of the students increased. Fifty-two percent saw an increase in behavior. And thirty-one percent said they felt it affected directly this child's attendance. And not only does it have that direct effect for our students, but this is a quote from one of our frequent store shoppers, which at the end of the year she shared, "This store helps me feel supported." That's her as the teacher, saying she feels supported from this store. "Too often, teachers give so much out of their own pockets, and we still do. And the items from the store helped me to have, to buy less out of my own pocket. Give me many, many items, both school, school supplies, other items I was able to use as prizes for behavior, I ready diagnostic growth, and for returning homework and more. This store is a blessing to me and my students." In the past two months alone, we've provided already this school year two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars in supplies. We opened for in-person shopping on September first, and it is by appointment. We limit fifty teachers for every two hours. We limit 50 teachers for every two hours that the store is open, and so it is distanced and masked. On behalf of our Board of Directors and our staff, we are honored to have the opportunity to serve this district, its students, and its teachers. And pictured here is our most recent school board meeting. We conducted a data walk where we analyzed each of the programs and initiatives of the foundation to take a real look at the impact. I'd like to thank Dr. Gullett for serving on our board, Mr. Christian serves on our board, and our newest board member, Reverend Cummings, who serves as the liaison for the school board. For the return of initiatives like Black Stein Reading Project, to supplying our tools for teaching, store resources, and ensuring our students have what they need to be successful, we will continue to make sure we financially and materially support Marion County Public Schools. I'd like to say a personal thank you for the board's support of the work that we are doing at our foundation. It has been quite a privilege the last seven months to serve as director. The first time I addressed my Board of Directors as the new executive director, I had shared my motto. And it was the first quote I placed on my desk when I graduated college and I had my first job. And my motto was, and still is, "Whatever you are, be a good one." And so, whatever you are, whether it is a parent, whether it is a friend, in that moment, whether it is a spouse, whether it is an employee, whether it's a school board member, whether it's a teacher, or it's a support staff person, whatever you are, everyone just be a good one. So, I'd like to say, I get to work with a small but mighty staff of six really, really good ones. And this last month alone, when they heard the call from the district that more support was needed, my staff helped in our schools as substitute teachers, as cafeteria workers, as contact tracers, whatever was needed, because they are good ones. And they are serving the 36-plus-thousand students and the 7,000 employees who are good ones. Thank you for letting us do that work.
Well, thank you so much. That was really a wonderfully uplifting and enthusiastic presentation. We all need that. It's just a great reminder of why we're here and why we strive to be good ones.
Thank you. Ms. McInall, you are a good one.
Yes, you are.
And we're grateful for you. So, thank you so much for this great presentation and for all your hard work. And please tell your team that's working with you and behind you, thank you also. This is excellent.
Thank you. I don't think a lot of people don't really know how much comes out of the foundation. So, thank you. They see the weekly things that we get, but you guys provide a huge, huge service to the classroom, directly to the classroom, and the support to our teachers. So, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. There's great work to be done.
Yes.
We're proud to do it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Whatever you are, be a good one.
All right. Is there any public comment? All right. Seeing none, board members, I'd like to offer you a choice. Next on our agenda is our Safe Schools update, which is slated to take about 30 minutes. And then after that, we have our construction projects, district offices, MTI, MTC updates. So, the choice I offer you is, would you like to take a break now, or would you like to wait till after the Safe Schools presentation, then take a break?
I need to take a break now, please, Chair Thrower.
Sure. Okay. Well, then, we will adjourn at 10:34, and we will resume about 10:45. Recession, recession. Thank you.
On the line with us? Mr. Browning, are you still on the line with us? Mr. Browning, are you still on the line with us? Okay, so apparently, Mr. Browning is not on the line at the moment. Yeah, so just FYI. Yeah, that background noise we were hearing was coming from his phone.
Let's resume our work session at 10:49 a.m., and we will be moving on to our Safe Schools updates with Dennis McFattan. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Good morning to each of you, Chair Thrower, to all the board members, Dr. Gullett. Good morning. Today, let me get the presentation filled up. We're here to give you the annual state-required update for the FSAT, and this is a requirement by the state that we come for you after.
Hold on just a second. Board Member Browning, would you please mute your line? We're getting a lot of feedback. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And so, even though we're presenting this to you today, the FSAT itself is confidential, the contents of it, the information that's in it, but the presentation today is not confidential. There's nothing in this presentation today that would pose any type of security threat to our district. So, each year, we're required to complete not only a school FSAT or assessment, but we're also required to complete a district-level FSAT. And so far, the Safe Schools Department And so far, the Safe Schools Department, the team of personnel that work with me, they have completed all of the FSATs for our each individual schools as well as our district level assessment. So we are required by state statute to present this here, the findings to you and have everything submitted, the schools' assessments, by October 1st of 2021. So with today's work session and the board approval, on next Tuesday, we will then be able to finalize and submit everything before October 1st of 2021. But just to know they are completed and they're just, we're just waiting for the board approval for, at the next board meeting, and we can submit them. So after we get the reports submitted and we get recommendations from the board, you can send recommendations as to what you think we should do for the next year based on our recommendations. And once we do that, we're required to submit that information to the third, to the state within 30 days after the board meeting. So currently, right now, our main three focus areas are fencing, cameras, and door buzzers. These are what we call our physical security hardening measures. And right now, we have 34 schools fenced in, and we expect to have three more based on the funding that we receive by the end of the 21, 2022 school year. With that, we're looking at around January to have them done, the January of 2022, to be completed with those three schools. We got 30 schools with cameras so far, and we're going to add five more, again, by the end of the 2021, 22 school year. Door buzzers, 17. We're going to be able to add 11 schools with door buzzers. That'll take us up to 28 schools with door buzzers.
And all of these by January or by the end of?
By the end of the 21, 22 school year. It takes a little bit longer to do the door buzzers because so many different departments has to be, take part in that process. Now, last year, as we go to the next slide, I kind of wanted to show you with this graph where we're moving, where we're at and where we have come from. Back in 2018, we only had 27 schools fenced in, 21 schools with cameras, and only two schools with door buzzers. 2019, we increased that number to 29 with fences, 27 with cameras, and we remain at two with door buzzers. But you could see in last year, 2021, 2020, 2021, we got 34 schools total with fencing, 30 schools with door buzzers, and we went up to 17 schools with door buzzers. And at the end of this year, again, the graph just shows that if we complete the task that we have scheduled, the process, the projects will have 37 schools with fences, 35 with cameras, and 28 with door buzzers. So one of the questions was, how much do we have remaining? That's always the question, and we have been moving frantically really good. So basically, with fences, we've only got about 26% left. That's about 13 schools. And some of those schools are already fenced in, but we just need to do some upgrades to get them up to the level of standards that we want them to be at. 30% for cameras, which is about 15 schools, and then 44%, which is about 22 schools with door buzzers. So our recommendation as a Safe Schools Department, in collaboration with all of our other internal stakeholders, we believe that we should continue to focus on our fencing, door buzzer, and our camera projects. You know, we work very well because this is a team effort, district-wide, because just because we may feel as though something is best from a Safe Schools Department, we have to consider the cause, our educational, how it affects our kids educationally. So we work with everybody to make sure that we're doing it in the most efficient way as possible. And so as we move away from schools, I shouldn't say move away from school hardening, but as we put those things in place, we also have to consider these here. Dr. Gullett, Mr. Villanello, we're always talking about these type of topics because it's not just school hardening that's a problem. We make, we have to address bullying, drug abuse, gang activity, violent behavior, mental health. All of these things plays into the role of what Safe Schools is trying to accomplish. So if we got the hardening measures in place and don't have these things also that we're focusing and concentrating on, the hardening measures is kind of pointless, you know, useless in some cases. So we want to make sure that we put a prevention level in there as well, and we're working well, again, with all of the internal stakeholders, student services, mental health, to try and make sure that we're addressing these concerns as well as the physical hardening of our schools. This is one of the key components that we have in our school system is the SROs. We do have 37 SROs in our county schools, 18 in our cities. We got one school resource officer in Bellevue, and then we have guardians. And that is it. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them at this time.
Thank you, Mr. McFattan. Board, any follow-up questions?
I don't have a question. I just want to say thank you, you know, when I think back to a couple of years and what we were looking and, you know, you're, you have a direction and a plan. So, thank you.
We got a direction, we got a plan, and as we move forward, we also have to start thinking about our district facilities, our transportation, this building here, all of those things have to come into play because we're here to protect students. I always say students, staff, and visitors. Because without the staff, we can't work, you know, can't take care of the students, you know, vice versa. So we have to start looking at the whole big picture for the district.
And I want to say thank you. I'm looking at 2018 to 2022, we have made some huge jumps in that timeframe. So I know that we have a few more to go, but I'm glad to see that we look like we're under 20 schools in everything.
Yes.
And so we're moving in the right direction. Thanks for that. And while I was, I guess I'm diverting just a little bit, but while I was looking at this presentation, it came to my mind about these TikTok things.
Yes.
That we keep seeing. So I wanted to say something about that while we're there. That, please, you, you give us some, give us some, some of your input on that TikTok thing, Dennis, because I got my own, you know?
We realize, if, if, most of you don't know, this TikTok challenge, it's a TikTok challenge that went out that basically had kids videotaping themselves destroying school property, soap dispensers, paper towel dispensers, whatever they could in restrooms. This is not unique to Marion County. Not only is it statewide, it is a national issue. We reached out to districts all across the state. They said they're having the same thing. Everybody's been looking for different ways to combat it. I will say that this week has been kind of slow, which is a good thing, knock on wood. But what happened was, we've had, we went and kind of aggressively tried to stop it by using social media to tell the kids, this is not the right thing to do. I'm actually meeting with Chief Balkin this morning, myself and Kevin, to actually put together a Sky Alert message for parents, to let the parents know that this is not a game. This is not something that they should, you know, talk to their kids about because it's going to cost them money. It takes time away from our school personnel, our SROs, takes time away from me being able to provide services for other things, more concerning issues. This can be controlled, this can be stopped, this is something that does not have to happen. So we're addressing it that way. I know we got an SRO that's made a video, working with Cynthia Barnes, that we're going to try to put out on Twitter and the different stuff, where this SRO is in the restroom and addressing this TikTok challenge. So we're addressing it that way. Different districts are doing different things, so. It's cost us a pretty penny so far, and we're trying to get all the numbers to determine how much it's cost us. But we've arrested, unfortunately, about seven students.
And the thing that kind of hit me about it is, you know, they may see it as mischief or a prank, but the value of things can elevate that, that prank from a misdemeanor to a felony to a higher felony. Am I right, Attorney Powers? And it could be very, very, it could be very damaging later down the road when they're getting ready to do some things in life, so.
And that's what we're addressing, and we're specifically in this Sky Alert message is telling them that this is not, it may seem like a prank, it may seem like a game, but it's a code of student conduct violation, it takes away from our resources and our time, and it's potentially a crime.
Yeah. I'd also like to encourage schools to come up with targeted punishments for this stupid challenge, this devious licks, because it's creating permanent damage in our schools, and, and it seems to be targeted to bathrooms. So it's important for anyone to understand that when they inflict that kind of damage, they need to have a hand in cleaning it up as much as possible, and including a toilet brush. So in the real world, there's very specific consequences for your behavior. And again, this is just something I, personally, I can't think of anything more stupid.
It hit us out of nowhere. It was just there one day, and before we knew it, we were a week into it.
Right.
And when we jumped on it, like I said, it's really slowed down this week. We have had limited reports, but for those two weeks, we were hit pretty hard.
And it's probably because you guys jumped right on it and are conveying how serious this is. Do you really want to, you know, put your educational career and, and your work opportunities at risk because you committed a felony by doing something really stupid? I know I've said stupid here probably three times in the last 30 seconds, but that's what it is. It's just stupid.
And it's amazing because when you have kids around this, this age, this, this school age, they're like, oh, yeah, I knew about that, but I wouldn't do nothing that stupid, you know? But some kids.
Most of them know better.
They're gullible.
Yeah.
There's a few that's gullible to it, and they, they do, do this. And I know the Sheriff's Office also created a video, and it's been out circulating on Facebook, addressing the same issue.
And that, that bill could hinder them from graduating on time, correct?
Yep. If, if, if they don't pay the, there's a bill that could be attached to, the restitution.
Right.
The restitution.
Seek restitution and attach it to their.
Now, you can't walk because you.
Right, you did something in sixth grade.
Destroyed a bathroom.
And like I said, a soap dispenser, we got the price of that stuff, but we've had a urinal destroyed, which having to go inside of a wall and do a lot of work.
Right.
That could cost thousands.
Yeah. Any, anytime a kid is caught and anytime they can have a part in whatever it takes to put that area that they destroyed back to rights, this board member's all for it.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, appreciate it. Is there any public comment? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to construction projects, district offices, MTI, MTC updates. Hello, Ms. Talbert Irving. That's right. Let the official wipe down happen, please.
And while, Madam Chair, if I may, while, while Mr. Christian is taking very good care here, I wanted to mention that Ms. Talbert Irving is going first because of the unique nature of the components of this agenda item. We are starting first with the lens of what students' needs are. I think it's important to say that publicly, and here, I know that you all support that. That is, that is always what we do first. So just wanted to say that's where we're starting. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Gullett, because not always do people make that connection between capital projects and student achievement.
Yes.
All right. Good morning, Chair Thrower, Vice Chair King, Board Members, Attorney Powers, Superintendent Gullett, and Ms. Prestapino. We were going to start out discussing the design of MTI and MTC, building our site, but after our discussion, we decided to evaluate all things inclusive of academics. So we know with our career and technical education programs, it's to prepare those individuals for occupations important to Florida's economic development. And as we look at our district strategic plan that addresses our college and career pathways, we want to ensure that we enhance and expand. I just want to make sure we understand enhance and expand our career technical programs and really build a career pathway from middle school through high school. So we want to provide a strategic variety of offerings that students can not only choose from, but we want to ensure those CTE course align, offerings are in alignment with our community needs and build a pipeline with our community partners. So when our students exit out, they're gainfully employed, and we want to work on partnerships. So we want to align what we currently have, we want to project out to the future, what's happening three to five years from now. When we talked about and referenced that we are the horse capital of the world, looking at our CTE programs at high school and MTI to make sure we build those partnerships so when those kids leave out, they can go straight into society and be gainfully employed. And we continue to say enhance and expand. So with that, what we're doing for our action steps are we're analyzing our data. What does the data tell us as it relates to course offerings? Are we offering the correct courses that are in alignment with the DOE's framework? Then also, is it based on our economics as we project out? So that would be Mr. Fraser, our Area Superintendent, Mr. Whitehouse, myself, Ashley Morgan, and Mr. Mike Kelly, that are walking and touring the classes, not only at MTI, but also in our high schools and our middle schools. And we're looking at the benchmark standards for instruction. We're looking at the number of students currently enrolled in MTI. Is it part-time? Is it full-time? We're looking at the kids that are there in ninth through 12th grade. How do we track them to make sure they finish? And then we're looking at our kids who need course recovery. We also want to meet with our local community partners through our Engagement Director and the surrounding colleges to be forward-thinking and map it out. Where do we want to be in three to five years with our programs, offerings at MTI? We're looking at options, choice at high school and MTI, transportation, and expansions. And we need all this information before we move forward. So we'd like to come back and share these recommendations prior to presenting proposals on a rebuild or a building. We want to look at our academic return on investment and be fiscally responsible.
Sounds great. Thank you very much. And it, when I think about buildings, I think of, we want to build them for the future to be able to, as, as program needs change, that the building has that built-in flexibility to be able to modify in a fiscally responsible manner. That's great. Thank you. You good?
Thank you.
I'm good, yeah. That sounds great.
Thank you, and good morning again. As we segue from talking about student facilities, we want to talk about the ancillary district facilities as well. And before we do so, I want to capture what we've talked about for years now. So we have been talking about this building we're sitting in for, for some time now. And at the direction of the board in the last year, we've looked at a lot of different options. We have looked at land, finding land around the area, and should we purchase land and should we build new on new land? We also looked at rentals, different buildings we could purchase or rent to accommodate the district office as well. And then most recently, we were asked to look at what about a district footprint? What could we look at to do in the current locations that we are in? So that is what we're here to present today, is looking at the downtown footprint. So we want to look at this in a matter of three lens and then talk about consensus at the end of the presentation. So minimally, we know that we have an unhealthy building here that we're sitting in, and that we have aging facilities in this block of district offices as well. We also know that we have district offices over at MTI, which is also a failing facility. So minimally, the, we're going to have to do some things just to remain occupying the current building. And that is the green box there, rectangle there that you see renovating. And Robert's going to talk about each individual option here, but minimally, we have some things we have to do for renovation if we do nothing at all. Secondly, then, we're going to look at option one, the blue box. How I'd like to frame this one is think of this as a combination. So looking at part renovating buildings and part new buildings in this area. And then in the orange box, option two would be a complete bulldozing facilities and building new buildings and not trying to renovate old buildings. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Knight, who will go into each one of these.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens.
Well, good morning, ladies and gentlemen, once again.
Morning.
So we really have these three options for you, and one is sort of really just a stay-put type of option. And that is, if we were to stay in this building, what would we need to do minimally to continue to occupy it? We have a slide here that talks about specifically just the exterior envelope. That is the roof, the exterior walls, and doors and windows. And that would be typical of not only this building, but the building behind us. And so minimally, what we need to do in the exterior is need to pull the covers off of the windows which are still in the wall. We would need to replace those windows and reseal them and then do. windows and reseal them and then do some minor surgery inside where walls intersect where the window used to be before it was covered up. And that would allow us to stop the water intrusion coming through the windows. We do know that in some cases, those windows are leaking. They've been covered up for a number of years, several decades at least. And of course, we'd have to replace the roof, not only in this building, but the building behind us. So again, this is really just an exterior event. It's not something that involves major surgery inside the building. And we think that cost figure is going to be somewhere about $850,000. And again, what that gains us is just protecting the building envelope and it doesn't gain us any square footage and it doesn't gain us any major changes inside, just those that are associated with the windows being uncovered. So our first true option involves staying put on this block and replacing the buildings on the employment services, technology and finance block. So what we would do here is again, treat the outside of the building, but also go inside and replace floors, ceilings, wall treatments, lighting, bathrooms, that sort of thing. Now, keep in mind, because of the way this building was designed with wood floors on top of piers, second floor that's all wood, very similar to some of the buildings like a Howard Academy when they were designed in the day, we're very limited on how many walls we can move. So there's really not much of a provision to blow this wall out, make the boardroom three times as big, rip the bathrooms out, move them to another end of the building. That major surgery would force us to have to get into the foundation and structural system of the flooring. And that is major, not only major expense, but we're going to run up against situations where we just flat out might not be able to do it from a physical standpoint. So we would do as much as we could, mostly in the way of systems replacements, like for like in this building, keep the same footprint. So again, wouldn't gain any square footage per se within the confines of the exterior. And then we would go over to the employment services block and put up a three-story building so that combined those two blocks, this one and that block would give us about 90,000 square feet to house not only the folks that are in those facilities, but also the folks coming from the MTI campus. And then finally, associated with this option would be the one where we go to the existing parking lot to the south of this block and construct a three-story parking garage, which we would need not only to cover the folks that are coming over here, but the existing folks as well as Osceola Middle School staff, which makes up probably 60%, if not more, of the current parking lot. And so that would allow us to house parking for all three campuses, this block, the employment services block, and the Osceola Middle School staff. That cost, we think right now, is about $40,195, excuse me, $40,190,000. I'm doing what you were doing earlier today, Mr. Robbins.
I was like, the price dropped.
$40.85. So yeah, Teresa just left the room seeing no need for her to be here. Excuse me, that's $40,195,000 is what we think the cost would be at this point. The next option is sort of starting with a clean slate. Now, we kind of went full tilt on this one and drew in some things that are probably not going to happen. What this option entails is raise the block, raise the block where the employment services is, and raise the block where the parking lot is and construct one large building. Now, this particular option includes abrogating Southwest Fourth Street. We don't necessarily think that would happen because there are utilities underneath and they would either A, have to be relocated, or if they cannot be relocated, the city would still have to have access to them, which means we would have to build a building on the parking lot and on this block and have some sort of a crossover. And if that was too expensive or not desirable, then we would simply drop back, put at least a one-story building on this block, maximum footprint, and then go over to the parking lot block and add probably a two-story building there. And then we would still have a three-story parking garage on the current employment services, finance and IT block. And so all three of those components combined, we expect to be just under $41 million or $40,995,000. Now, as far as if there was any sort of a push in one direction or another, what do things look like in terms of a cost? On the top part of this slide, you see the cost summary. Just to fix the exterior of this building and re-roof the building behind it would be about $850,000. Again, the first option was is staying put in this building, but doing as much as we could would be just over $40 million. And then the second option, if we start with a clean slate, would be just under $41 million. And as far as how we would fund it, I'm going to defer to our chief financial officer and she'll no doubt speak about some of those options. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning again. When Robert said $40,000, I thought, we can do that right now.
I was like, we're done.
Yeah.
Getting a chair.
It was just to make sure everyone was paying attention. Absolutely. In terms of potential funding, what I would like to start out saying is that we are allowed to borrow money when it is an educational facility. This is considered ancillary. So there is no option to borrow money. But there are some creative financing ideas that were shared with me with our financial advisors. And you may remember, they've come in here over time when we've refunded. And what they've shared is we can look at projects in the current five-year plan that are educational and borrow money towards those items. We identified about $52 million for HVAC projects over the next five years. So if we are willing to move those projects up, there may be a possibility of funding this project through the current 1.5 mil capital projects fund. But before we can do that, we need some sort of direction from you. And I think they're going to sum it up in a minute. But I just wanted you to understand that because it's an ancillary, we do not have the opportunity to borrow money for this. But we do have educational projects that are in the current five-year plan that could be shifted to the next few years. And if you had any questions about that, I'm ready to answer that.
Something that I was thinking about, this ancillary versus educational projects. And to me, you know, our employees are basically, you know, married to our students, you know, at every level and providing opportunities for them. So I was just wondering if there might be creative funding opportunities if we thought in terms of using whatever concept we end up with for the physical building, to combine that with opportunities for CTE for students right with us. For example, in the financial services office and the technology services office, you know, opportunities for kids to do volunteering for volunteer hours for work study, for even paid internships, you know, giving them that mentoring that we know that students need so badly while they're in school to open up their vision for, well, you know, maybe they would never want to be a teacher in a classroom, but they may want to be an accountant, you know. Has there ever been any kind of funding like that available?
There is not any specific funding. You'll be pleased to know that we do have interns.
I know.
Finance, whether they're high school and some of the CF students as well. And I believe you will find that in our internal accounts department as well as in employment services. So while we don't have an overall encompassing program, there are opportunities for students. And we used to work directly with MTI on placing students. And I'm sure that is one of the programs that the curriculum department will be looking into, expanding and offering opportunities.
Yes, ma'am, because I have seen them through the years. And for me, since we're having this focus on CTE and really getting kids to think about their next step and being able to give them exposure while they're still with us, because it's that window of opportunity that we have to open for kids. And I didn't know if that could lead us to any kind of creative funding sources because it wouldn't be that separation anymore between ancillary and educational. It would actually be very educational.
I agree with you, but the definition per DOE for educational facilities are basically our schools. And they term any of these buildings here as ancillary, whether it's the bus depot or any of those items, other items, the transportation, the technical services, all of those are considered as ancillary.
When really, they could all be incubators is my point.
Yes, absolutely.
For growing students. All right. I'll get off of the soapbox.
I understand what you're saying.
But it excites me to think that that could be an opportunity because kids need that real-world exposure and that mentoring. We say it all the time.
We've had some great interns in business, if I can speak, from that venue. And they've gone on to finish their education and gone on to the business world. But it did give them that real live experience. And as I said, that program was thriving with MTI many years ago. We would actually contact a specific person in MTI and say, you know, we need some student workers in the summer.
Right.
And it sort of blossomed into a year-round program with 20 hours, which does allow them to continue their regular school day or if they're in college.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay.
So some more information before we get to our questions is we've been asked over the time, what are the appraisals of the certain buildings and areas around our district? So this is a resource slide for everyone. It gives you the appraisals. The appraisals, official appraisals were back in 2019. And you can see that we didn't want to go back and pay for appraisals, so we just did an estimated base on inflation factor of 10.5 and added that together. So you can see our different properties and what we believe the estimated value is of those properties that could come into effect, you know, in the future, once we decide what we want to do with district offices moving forward. So again, that was just informational. So here is what we're seeking. So in order for Teresa, excuse me, Mrs. Boston Ellis to move forward in looking at loans and our loan factors and so forth, we must know what direction our board would like to move in, to be more specific of what we're drilling down to. Are we looking to renovate this building, which is that first option, that in green minimally? Are we looking to keep this building as far as the footprint with minimal interior work and then also build new buildings, which was that blue option one? Are we looking to, as Mr. Knight stated, have a clean slate and build all new buildings, which was that orange option? And once we know that, then Ms. Boston Ellis can move forward with more specific loan factors.
Thank you.
And I'll move back to that slide as well.
I had a question, I guess, Mr. Knight. I'm looking at option one and two. So the total square footage doesn't change? And between those options, I thought it went up in one.
Well, the building's square footages do change. What the 90,000 square feet represents is the ability to house everybody that's currently what we would call downtown or District West and all the folks at MTI. So if you keep this footprint, you have to build a bigger building when you're replacing the others. If you raise both properties, you can balance out those footprints a little more. We still are targeting 90,000 square feet total. So that does change the footprint of each of the options, one being bigger. If you lock into this, it's only about 15,000 square feet on this block that we have, about 92, 9300 in this building and about 6,100 in the building behind us. So you've got to build 74,000 square feet across the street, but if you raise this building and build, say, 30,000 here, then you only have to build 60 on the other side. So 90 is there just because that's what we're targeting, that we think is the comfortable square footage to house all the folks we do have. And that's based on, A, what we have now and B, what the needs are that we're shoehorned into and need to do something different.
I have a question, Mr. Knight. In terms of calculating the square footage needed, we certainly have had a shift by necessity in the ability for employees to work remotely. And I was just wondering if you had that in the back of your mind as you were coming up with this need for square footage, because it can certainly be a cost savings if we've identified job descriptions that it's just as, it might even be better for them to work remotely and not have to come into an office every day. Is that, was that part of any of the discussion? I'm just interested to know.
Only to a degree, just because it's obviously not set in stone that we have the whole finance department working from home for the next 50 years or the entire employment service. You know, some things like school choice, people want to go up and knock on a door and come in and talk to somebody about registering their student.
Sure.
Same thing if you're doing bidding, kind of hard to turn in a bid if there's nobody at the purchasing department. Or employment services, how do you go there and get your badge? How do you go there and get set up for as an employer if you've got to go to somebody's living room? So we only took into consideration that instead of a full-fledged office for every single employee, some may be in cubicles. Now, how many? We don't know. That would be part of the programming moving forward. That'd be one of the first things we'd start on this is which department needs to be by which department and who is in a cubicle versus an office versus just a closet to hang your hat. So we didn't go into heavy depth just because obviously there's been no official move in any particular direction as far as working from home as a permanent basis. So when we go and come up with that 90,000 square feet, what we did is we looked at the functions that this district has, which is not too much like any other district. There's a superintendent and a board and there's deputies and there's a whole staff. And then you go to state requirements for educational facilities to look up what the definition of space is for those. And then we made some judgments about, well, you're not going to get away with just one conference room for 300 people. So we may need two or three or four smaller conference rooms instead of everybody using the boardroom all the time. So, but those are loose. You know, that's not tied down and set in stone yet because we would have to go thoroughly through the programming process. So to answer the question, we consider that, but because it's, for the most part, everybody's back in the office and space they are in, we didn't, we didn't treat this as 50% of the staff or a certain number would not be in the office at all.
Right. And it would be unique to the job description, certainly.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sure.
Other thoughts, ideas, feedback?
I have some feedback, I guess, because we've been talking about this for years and years. And I think we've mulled and discussed many, many times. And I have to say, as a board member, I'm glad that the proposal for us to keep our building here centrally located with a land that we are familiar with and everyone just seems to know. I'm really glad that we seem to be looking at that as a direction to go. When I look at renovating this building just to the outside, we're just kind of putting a Band-Aid over it and we still have a sick building that has water issues and stuff like that. So I would like to take that option off if that's okay. I don't know what you guys are thinking about that. And when I look at the options of one and two, what was it, the blue and orange? With that, I kind of like the idea of option two, just because it's new and we're not going to have old problems and things just, you know, and it just kind of gives us a new slate. And it's also looking forward. It's protecting, in my opinion, that I know, also probably the boards and our employees in the future when we're long gone. And then they're not having to kick, you know, certain things down the road to address our building that's still here and has some issues. I don't know what you guys are thinking. That's my thoughts at the moment. I don't know what you guys got.
I'll jump in. You actually said some of the same things that I said. With the renovation, I think it's, I think it's a lot of money to put a, it's an expensive Band-Aid and it doesn't resolve the issues that we're going to have. I think we'll have more issues because it's such an aging building. It's a sick building. And we need to look out for our people that work in this building daily. I don't think that's going to resolve it. I didn't really like option one at all. I like option two as well because I think it gives us, it helps us upgrade to this downtown area. It keeps us centrally located. My concern, as always, was going to be how are we going to fund this, how are we going to pay for it? And then the other part is that how are we going to justify doing this when we have issues at schools as well with schools? So my concern is that we can do it and trying to figure out a way we can do it simultaneously with some of the things that we need to do done, have get done at schools as well. So I agree with you. that we need to do done, have get done at schools as well. So I agree with you. I concur with you, Ms. King.
Yeah. I think there also has been a little bit of discussing, because our buildings are aging throughout the district. I think there is some concern that this building itself is probably maybe one of the greatest concerns in all our buildings. And so if you do a little bit of research, that's what I've found also.
Yes.
Board Member Browning, are you with us?
Yes, I am. Yes, so let's see. I'm a little bit in a awkward place. I can't, I can't speak too long, and I don't have my notes with me. However, I'd like to make several points. One, on the existing building, it would be, what I think we should consider, at least consider, is bringing the building up to normal maintenance standards. And by that I mean, like these, these covers that we have, it's the biggest source of the leaks. And to not have maintained those for a long period of time means that the windows behind, behind them, behind those covers, the caulk-ing, obviously, is just gone. It needs, usually caulk needs at least a five-year maintenance. So if we could, I would like to see immediately covers come off and caulk-ing take place, just to, just to bring things up to speed and to stop that water flowing in, because that's just, that just isn't really good. Let me see. That's just a huge concern. I've owned a lot of buildings, and everybody, everybody on the board knows and in the community understands black mold and mold and issues like that. And I'm a big believer in making sure that the, that maintenance is always done. Even if, even if you're gonna, using kind of a metaphor, if you're going to trade a car, don't let it, like, have to be traded, create a crisis because you don't maintain it. I like to see the maintenance. Then going from that point, I'd like to see these options get a name, a real name, so that we can tell the east of district or west of district or something. It's almost impossible. The people I talk to just can't follow it. Then the, the idea of location. Now, I'd just like to ask the question, what are the 10 best places to put the, to put the, standby, uh, uh, getting interrupted here, to put the 10 best places to put it in Marion County? We've got an enormous number of parking lots. We've got, I'd like to consider, at least ask the board's thoughts on distributive housing for administration, because we're moving into a time when, when we'll be into much, much more Zoom-type, and I'm just using it as a, not as a brand, but as a, a style. Administration will no longer really be in the central location, you know, going into the future. And then to build like a three-story garage, like we have to be in this little footprint, to me, that didn't even make my top 10 list. So if we could think in that regard and then take a deep breath and get out of the crisis, because this, look, I'm just going to characterize it as at least a 10-year problem, and I don't like to solve a 10-year problem in, you know, in 60 days. I'd like to see that really relaxed and really get it out into the community, and that's why I'd like to see names on these particular options. And I'd like, like Mr. Knight, to look into distributive education, and I intend to go up and, you know, at the, at the teachers, what is it, School Board Association, and just look at, look at some other situations, how it works out economically and logistically, because the people of Ocala have carried this thing for a long time. And, you know, when you drive, when you drive, when you come to these meetings, I'm always saying Don Allen for three minutes, it's hard. I'd like to, I'd like to rotate us around the county a little bit, or at least consider what the logistics of that might look like. And just introduce some of these ideas and get a discussion going within the board over the next few workshops, so that, you know, we can make a prudent, long-term decision. Then I'm real concerned about the finances and what, I'd like to see a list of our top 10 needs. And if we go into debt or if we use available funds, then we're going to be shortchanging somewhere else. And, you know, we're all concerned about that. So what are, I just asked the board, what are the best of those, of those issues, what are the, what are the top 10 solutions? And now that it's out, because when I was presented to, that didn't go out to the public. And so now that the public has it, I'm sure we'll get a flood of great ideas. And, and Mr. Knight will have a flood of great ideas. And we've got a lot of incredibly powerful and competent real estate people, and that's what we're talking about. And I would never build, I personally would never put funds into a three-stack parking area when we live in a county that's got more open land than almost anywhere in the civilized world. So those are, those are my, my early thoughts. And if you could just get a name. I don't know how we arrive at that, but I would like a name that people can understand for option one, option two, and option three.
Thank you, Board Member Browning. And yes, you raised some critical points, and your challenge is that you're coming into this conversation at the end of, I would like to say, seven years at least of discussion. Please correct me if I'm wrong. Longer?
It's been, it'll be four years in November on this particular focus, but the discussion actually goes back to the closing of Old Forest High School back in 2005.
Okay, so we've, it is now the waning months of 2021, and we've been discussing this since 2005. And as a public entity, all of our discussions have been public record, they've been advertised, there's been materials, there's been media coverage. I have no doubt that we could always do better in terms of sharing out and communicating out to the public what we're thinking about and what we're working on deciding to do. But I will say, from, from my perspective, as, as a citizen and as an employee and now as a school board member, I've been well aware of this conversation for a very long time. And now we're at a point, after looking all over Marion County, which is, as you said, Board Member Browning, the size of Rhode Island, and looking at different options that will serve us as a public service entity, we've now finally narrowed it down to, to an area that seems to serve several purposes. The first one being, and I was just thoughtfully reminded of this a few minutes ago, that we probably have fewer positions that can be transferred to full remote than most other businesses, because we are a customer-service-based organization. And one of the things that, and this is going to take a few minutes, but please bear with me. One of the things that I saw in rage parents, more than anything, was to go to a remote location, trying to find the right person to talk to, getting lost in a web and network of old portables, so that by the time they finally got to the person that could help them, you know, they were madder than wet hens, and they were mad enough when they first found their parking spot. So the idea of coming up with a centralized location that everyone is familiar with already, people come downtown for the Christmas parade, people come downtown for Leder Ocala, people come downtown to shop and to eat and for all kinds of reasons, and we are seeing the exciting revitalization of downtown Ocala after being dead, you know, for decades when the interstate first went through. It was awful. So it's exciting to be part of that revitalization, from my perspective. In terms of the size of the area that we're talking about, at first glance, it does look like a postage stamp, because you drive in the front parking lot, and it's like old school, you know? There's parking spots, not all that many of them at first glance. But then, when I think about it, we've got this building, we've got the building behind it, which has not been fully utilized. We've got the whole block, all the way down to Osceola Middle School and Eighth Street, where financial services are, you know, Employment Division, all that. We, I don't know that we've had a conversation yet with the church about what looks to me to be woefully underutilized land most of the time, right across the way from us, where those basketball goals are. We have a mayor that wants nothing more than to, by his own admission, to see us maintain a presence here in, in Ocala. So I hope I'm not misspeaking, Mayor Gwynn, if you're tuning in. But I see this as a really exciting partnership opportunity, where we may not end up having to shoulder the, the whole load necessarily. I agree 100% that, once we decide on a direction, that we want to get the community even more excited about, about what we're doing. And that was my point about having it be an incubator for our students and so on, too. You know, where it becomes a, a, a community place, which is what we're supposed to be about anyway, you know, community and kids. As far as the, the numbers go, adding the 10 and 1/2%, I think that's very conservative. I would think that, with the way everything is, is growing and expanding, that there, we could probably get a lot, hopefully even more money than, than, than what's on there. As far as Osceola Middle School and Eighth Street, the warehouse area is right across from Osceola Middle School, so maybe some of that could be used for, for parking for them. You know, yes, they would have to cross the street, but they're having to cross the street anyway. I don't know. But I'm feeling like we're finally taking a very diffuse focus and narrowing it down. I think just renovating District West, the green, is just the tip of the iceberg. There's a lot of old homes and places in Ocala that once you shore it up and put a good roof on it and stop the leaking and take up gross carpeting and refinish the floors, you could have something, kind of a really nice entry to what this complex would end up being, that would honor the history of this building. So I am ready to focus on this whole big area and maybe even a little bit more property in conversation with the church. And then let's get something moving down here.
Okay, I, and I hear, was this Chair Thor speaking, or is it?
Yes, it is. Yes, it was. I'm done now.
Good, good. I, okay, good. All right. So, so all of that is absolutely fine. I would, I would really caution the board to, about jumping too quick into a project. I've got a lot of experience, probably more than anybody in the room, building, building. And to jump into them like that, you've got to look out ahead. You cannot be swayed by the urgency of the situation. And, you know, unless maybe there was a hurricane or, or something like that, or a, you know, like the Twin Towers going down, then okay, fine, I get it. But six months, I guarantee you, that's what it would take for me to make a, to go over material on several workshops and to really get it down and to look at some of the alternatives, so they have a, a chance to make, the advocates have a chance to make a presentation. And after they night hears us, and hears our dialogue, and hears what some of the thoughts are.
You okay, sir? Board Member Browning. I think we've lost you. Okay, all right. Well, while he's working his way back to us, hopefully, go ahead.
Question. I turned and looked this way and I saw Dennis. Does that, do any of these options include bringing his folk over into this building? I mean, with that, do we have enough space to do all that as well?
Yes, that's part of the 90,000 square foot calculation. Quite honestly, it's, just to reiterate, it's everybody that's currently in this block and the finance, employment services and technology block. It would be Mr. McFadden, it would be everybody at MTI. We even had a provision built into that 90,000 square footage to include the risk management department, since it's a branch of human resources.
At MTC?
That's across the street from MTC, yes. They did factor in when we put that loose program together.
Yeah, because that's an old building, too. So, so we're looking at the culmination of 16 years' worth of conversation and options and exploration. I'm not feeling a sense of urgency. I'm feeling a sense of relief that we're coming to the end of a very long due diligence period, where I can't imagine a stone that we didn't try to uncover, really. And thank you for your patience with the previous boards and with this board, because, you know, the most important thing for our schools is for them to be safe and, and, and healthy. And, and we're doing that. And we just had a great presentation from Dennis McFadden, you know, we are prioritizing safety and security for our students and staff on campuses. And then, in my mind, from the district level, we need to be, also, our laser focus needs to be on customer service, you know? And, and let's get a welcoming building with the right folk in the right places for the right reasons. That's going to be a cost saver and a time saver, you know, to have folks out at East and at West and here and there. You know, you're just going to have better collaborative conversation and quicker turnover of, of ideas and projects if you have some proximity. I don't want to let go of the idea of some remote working when that's possible. I think that's just the wave of the future, and we are doing that, even though we're together every day, later in the day, meetings, you know, we've been doing Zoom, and, and that would have never happened before. So, so we're getting there.
Can we talk about MTI? So we're also, Mr. Browning, we're at a crossroads with MTI also, that if we don't make a decision, we will be having to pour a lot of money into MTI. And I don't, we haven't agreed yet, but what I'm sensing and feeling is we're heading in a direction where we're going to try to not look at fixing anything at MTI and focus more here, and not waste money on projects that we don't have a long-term plan for. So that's one thing. And I completely understand Mr. Browning's hesitation, because I think, I think Mr. Knight will tell you, there's been several, several times that I didn't feel comfortable, you know, whether it be the mall or the Star Banner didn't work out, or land, or land swaps, or MTI. And so we have been looking at this for a very long time. And I can honestly say that I'm comfortable making a decision right now and knowing I have, I'm not going to say I have all the information, because I'm sure there's more.
Always more.
But I have enough information to make an informed decision right now. I do.
I too. We've kicked it.
I'm back on. I don't know if I, I think I lost connection there.
Yes, you did. And Board Member Browning, Board Member Cummings was just speaking, so if you'll hold off just a second.
Okay, all right, sure.
This board, other boards prior to us have looked at this issue time and time again. This board has looked at it. We've looked at it extensively, as Ms. King just stated, to buy in land, to looking for alternate sites, buildings, all, all different types of things. things, and I have to say, of the ones that I've saw since I've been on the board, this was the one that felt more, I felt more comfortable with, because it did not, it kept it centrally located, it kept us consolidating our people, and again, my biggest concern was, again, the funding, how we were going to get it done. We can't keep kicking, we can't keep kicking the can down the road on this.
16 years is a long time to discuss a project, and in the private sector, you'd be bankrupt.
Yeah, so, I'm comfortable, I'm comfortable with option two, moving forward with option two.
Board Member Browning, are you with us still, sir?
Yes, yes, I am, yes, I am. Well, the, probably the...
Sir? Okay, all right, well, he'll get back on, he'll get back on, I'm sure, but in the meantime, Vice Chair King, you raised a great point about MTI and no longer continue to put money into something that we don't intend to keep using, and that is one of the sickest buildings that we have, it has flooded multiple times, it is very spread out, it's very hard to make secure, so there, in my mind, that's going to be a conversation maybe for another day of what we're eventually going to do, you know, with that property, and I'm remembering, Vice Chair King, too, that you have been steadfast in saying, you know, sometimes knowing what you have is safer than not being sure of what you're going to get, and we are aware of all of the land that we own, we are aware of its associated benefits and issues, so that helps us go in with a more strategic vision that will likely turn out the way that we're, that we eventually plan to do it. And I like that too, that's a nice hedge, rather than going somewhere, you know, brand new and finding things as we go, like, ooh, if we hadn't known the Star Banner building was sitting on a sinkhole that nobody said anything about, just, you see my point. I mean, the ground shifts all the time.
We invited the oil refinery to build across the street, right?
Right.
Listen, I did have another question concerning this, because when I look, when I think of this area that we own.
That the word is out to move on it so fast would be to completely abridge all the, you know, potential input, just for one, and I'm just sort of grasping at potential benefits of making, yeah, at least 90 days so we could go in and we could have some serious workshops on this project. Because let me tell you, when you build something at this magnitude, you've got to, you've got to look, it's like, just like the Zoom concept, you know, there's a lot of big, you know, big board companies that will no longer operate, say, out of downtown Manhattan, and just the cost of coming from all, all the ends of Marion County and all those trips when in fact, we could easily distribute that administrative load around and they could connect into Ocala via electronics, and that world is just beginning, so. So, can the board look at that? I would hope, I asked that question, everybody kind of look into it and see, certainly comfort, I get that, you know, that it's been around, but, and on the second point, can we get, can we get these problems solved, pull those covers off and at least crop those windows? I am appalled, I was in that, I was in that building for three hours last, I'm going to say Friday, and I had to, like, allover or something, it was bad, the mold and the issues that are associated with it, it was bad, and I have a hard time even, even, as far as I'm concerned.
For that reason, Mr. Browning just said, he was in here for three hours and couldn't stay here, what about the people that are here eight hours? That's why we can't keep kicking the can down the road. But, as I was saying before we came back on, when I look at this area, I look at all of it, what about the, over here where the warehouse, where the testing, that's part of us?
And some testing, yeah.
That whole block.
Is anything in store for that in this project, or, I know you didn't mention it specifically, but?
There's a couple of different options. First, obviously, if we stay put on this block and the Employment Services block and the parking lot block, no matter how it winds up shaking out in terms of design, A, the central warehouse could be sold since the board had gone ahead and made the jump to move everything to the Phoenix Center, B, it could be incorporated in some fashion to what we're doing here downtown with district offices.
The additional parking or something?
Yeah, probably could be a variety of things, you know, just to lay out sort of the big picture on this, it's not, we're definitely not going to turn dirt in six months or a year or anything like that, what?
Oh, right, that's it, we're going to be here a while.
Yeah.
Which speaks to Board Member Browning's point about, you know, shoring up what we can, you know, certainly, I would love, if it's the right thing to do, I would love to see the covers come off those windows and get that, let's tighten up what we can and mitigate what we can because we know that what we're talking about today is not going to be in place tomorrow.
No, no, it's not, we'd have...
But, if we're making a commitment to this area, then it makes sense to maintain it, it doesn't make sense to maintain MTI at this point, at least from my perspective.
What we would be doing is, we'd have to do a program study anyway to verify, we've done this.
Other than to keep it looking.
In the last 16 years, we spent eight months doing it when we first started, we even had an architect help us with the programming and nothing became of it.
Right.
We painted MTI and put a roof on it.
Right.
And that was what we had to show for the efforts, but we've done this several times before in the programming, so what's involved there is going around, working with the superintendent and the deputies about who needs to be in the same building, who can be across the street, who needs to be in the same floor.
Right.
Who doesn't have to be in the same floor.
Right, for productivity.
And technology's a big part of that because it's the brain center for our entire infrastructure. So, just because we're working out of a closet now doesn't mean we have to continue to, we might need two closets, we might need a room that's not even a closet, but, so, all that programming has to happen first, and it'll take up to three months to get an architect on board, and we have to have something for them to do or time is just a wasting. And so, it, I would imagine it'd be easily six months before we're in position to really have a sound enough program to start to talk about, is it a one-story or a one-and-a-half-story or a two-story building in this block? Is it a one-story, one-and-a-half-story, two-story building in that block? And in the meantime, if the warehouse is well underway, then obviously the board can talk about, we are definitely going to continue to sell it, or we're going to continue to look at maybe it being parking. I can tell you that, just to sort of paint a picture on perspective, the parking lot behind this building houses 81 cars, and so if you think about 300 or so people, district people here, and another 50 to 60 in terms of staff from Osceola, not even including the folks at Eighth Street, and then you've got visitors, you're going to be pushing close to 400, so you do the math, and you get a big block of property, and even if you park 100 cars on it, that's four stories to make 400 cars. So, there's probably going to be some component of a parking garage, no matter how you slice it, just because you're talking about an infusion of 2/3 of your brain trust for curriculum and academics and other services that were not here in the last 50 to 60 years, they were housed in portable since that time.
We know.
We're at Hillcrest, Ms. Dobbins was out there at Hillcrest and...
Those were the days.
Deal with a couple of jacks in her portable to hold up the main beams because they were failing. So, we've been scattered all over, and so as you bring all those folks in, to make things more cohesive, just know that there'll be some sort of parking garage component, no matter which block we decide is parking versus building.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
And I don't want to just kind of ignore Mr. Browning's request.
No, not at all, because he's coming in on the caboose of a very long train.
So, can I make the suggestion or recommendation that we kind of compile, and I hate to say this, kind of putting more work on our folk, but kind of give him a packet of the things that we have talked about, discussed about, so that he understands this is not just a knee-jerk decision, this is something that we've talked about time and time again, maybe bring him to, give him some of the other presentations that you've got, I'm not saying that we sit down and take two weeks with him individually, but provide him the information so that he has it.
Electronically, because as you said, Zoom and electronic.
And let him have that information, which would maybe ease his mind on some of the things that we're discussing, because we're informed, I think he needs to be informed and to not...
Yeah.
I agree.
He also raised a couple of really good points in the sense of, you know, feeling so urgent, what I feel like I'm hearing is, is that we're looking at it six months to, that we have, you know, to continue to come up with ideas and input, start getting the city involvement, you know, continuing with our community involvement, let's build excitement for this project and the masterpiece it's going to end up being, continuing where schools, because we're the size of Rhode Island, there's not any way that everyone's going to be conveniently located, you know, ever. So, that's where the, being able to beam in remotely, you know, from schools and like we've started to do, basically after getting pushed into it a bit, to do things differently because of the virus, you know, we'll keep going with that. So, I feel like I'm hearing from the three board members that are sitting here that Board Member Browning is moving fast to get up to speed and sharing really valid concerns from someone with his lens, and that it really would be helpful to him to get at least a timeline that is succinct, you know, here's how it started and that brought us up to here, and if that could be sent to him electronically, then he could review it at his leisure, and then as we begin to move through this process, he can feel even, you know, even more part of the conversation and be more on a level playing field.
And if it's just a timeline, said to all of us.
Yeah, because that'd be interesting in terms of history, too.
It would be, and also, since we're talking, the one thing that, I mean, we don't have a, we don't know 100%, but time is sort of the essence also with financing, because we have interest rates, and then when you're around here enough, you realize that products go up in price too, and so the longer we wait, we may be looking at different numbers also, that's if we, that's my concern.
Yeah, yeah. So, am I hearing that it's important because of the employees that will need to continue to be in this building for now unless there's another plan to move them somewhere else in the meantime, that we want to do what we can to shore this building up unless we intend to raise it and completely, and that I feel like I'm hearing more leaning towards option?
Option two blue, right, or?
Blue.
What color was it?
Orange.
Orange.
Ooh, raising.
Option two orange.
So, that's raising this building.
Yeah.
Why, I hate that.
If I could chime in just a bit for informational, we are living on borrowed time as far as the MTI campus is concerned, I can tell you that HVAC system is running at 75%, and we're praying that fall comes sooner, and we're getting a little touch of that, but we are expecting to have to bring in a portable HVAC system to run that school starting in the spring because that current HVAC system is not, it's failing. That's just one failing component of MTI, so, again, our goal is to get those offices into a consolidated location as we move forward without delay in a sense, just wanted to put that information out there as well.
Where would we put them?
Well, if we move forward with this plan, we will hope that the portable, moving in a portable HVAC system will maintain, and they would remain there during the construction of this area, and then move over to here when the buildings are complete.
Okay. Excuse me, no, it's, it's also the change in weather.
That's why we need to do something.
Yeah, for all of our sakes, well, okay, so, so we're talking about raising this building completely, not saving a facade, or, well, maybe we could at least save a cornerstone, I don't know, it's just so historic.
We want to be respectful of it.
Yeah.
So, I'm sure Mr. Knight could probably work something out some way because he's usually pretty creative with some of those ideas.
Yeah, we're not going to come in here and design a big glass building or something or a pyramid that has nothing to do with this, so, obviously, keep in mind, just like we did at Osceola Middle School's cafeteria, they never had their own cafeteria before, and if you go look at it, aside from the fact it's new and the bricks are nice and clean and don't have years of wear on them, it looks very similar to what the main Osceola building is, and that's intentional, and so that was to pay homage to the fact that this was a school, you know, the main school at the time that housed quite a bit of folks in this area, and when we built a new cafeteria, it mimics that style and that feel. So, we certainly would have and expect to have an office that's similar to this, you know, the challenge with saving anything is it gets very costly, number one, and number two, I don't know that you can go in and save just a wall. This, the way this building is built, remember, it's wood floors, bottom floor, wood floors, top floor, so if you start to try to cut the floors away, you destroy the infrastructure that holds up the four walls. The way things were built in the day, they went up all at the same time, laid out a floor to brace the floor at the first floor level and then went up again, and with a building this old, with all the water that's intruded, we don't know what we're up against. And so, we certainly will do our best to save whatever the board wants to save, and if that's not the option, then obviously we can pay homage to the history of this block and the other blocks by creating something that's not just functional and modern, but certainly is a throwback to what some folks might remember in this community many, many years ago.
Design and architecture could play homage to what we are.
Yes.
Well, and without going too far down into the layers, speaking of bricks, we know that Reddick had its problems because of, it was built so cheaply, and so that was that. This particular building, what do we know about these bricks, anything?
No. Back in the day, nobody really sent halfway across the country for material unless they couldn't get it.
I think they made here, this was Brick City, right?
Yeah, I mean, there's clay in Ocala, there's clay all over north-central Florida, and of course, Georgia, Alabama, some of the southern states, and so it's not likely that they would have trained in something from the Midwest to do that. There were brick plants here, there were buildings even in the central and southern part of the state that were brick, and there's far less clay there, and so it's probably homegrown, meaning from the state of Florida, or at least from parts of neighboring states.
And we don't know if the floors are pine or hardwood, I would think maybe, well, who knows, because there's a lot of oak trees here, I guess my point is, is that we may end up running into the exact same issues with the water intrusion over multiple decades and asbestos and things like that, that sadly, and community members listening in, that we may be up against the same challenges with this building as we were with Reddick, you know, despite our hopes of it being a different scenario. However, anything that can be reclaimed in a fiscally responsible way, I think I'm hearing from the board that that would be pretty cool.
Yeah, we certainly can come up with some creative ideas to preserve what we can, just, there's a reason why things get covered up, and like the windows, probably they were covered up because we wanted more offices, so that put walls in terms of being in front of a window, but it also could have been covered up because they leaked so bad and nobody wanted to spend the money to take the rotting wood out that might have even had lead paint on it, you know, there's so many other factors to consider, years ago when you had asbestos flooring, you just simply threw carpet on top and encased it.
Right.
That's fine, till you change the carpet, and then you've got three times the work and cost to reclaim things, and everything underneath is no longer salvageable by the time you peel glue and sand and chip away and that sort of thing.
Right.
Certainly, we'll do everything we can to save whatever we can if we go that route, and if not, we'll certainly pay homage to it, that was the intent, anyway.
And while we begin to think about moving forward with this project, we want to make sure that the employees that are remaining here and at MTI are, and the kids too, because we have kids at MTI, are in healthy, as healthy as possible spaces while we're making this happen. What are we missing?
I don't know of any.
Could I just re, you know, double-check on the consensus, I mean, we...
Yeah, because we're at that point.
So, yeah.
Drum roll.
Did I hear, we are going forward with looking at option two, again, that doesn't mean we're committing $40 million to anything, there's no commitment on any cost at the moment, just whether or not we're to move forward with programming and starting that ball rolling, is that the direction I'm hearing the board wants us to go in?
I think it was option, yeah.
Two. Orange.
Yeah.
I was thinking option two with each color. I was thinking option two with each color, never mind, I'm not.
Well, option two's orange.
Go with the orange.
Orange.
Yeah, orange.
Option orange.
Okay.
Option orange.
Oh, that sounds like Asian orange, we need a better name. Well, remember Browning's not going to like. I think if this is the one we move forward with, we need to turn it to green because green means go.
Yeah.
And green means green, healthy buildings.
Yes.
Orange to me means.
Change it to green.
Yeah.
Okay, so the green, which is the old orange?
It's green now.
Yes.
Green for go.
Okay.
And healthy.
Yeah. Now, what about this, and I love this, I love a vocabulary, we're abrogating Southwest Fourth Street utility issues, could that torpedo this whole project?
Well, we wouldn't necessarily have to abrogate. That was put in there because there was thought that perhaps it could be one big building and that would mean fusing the blocks together. I mean, we certainly could talk to the city, but quite honestly, because we know there are utilities there, they would probably have some consternation about, well, gee, how do we ever get to those utilities again? They've been in the ground a while. But it doesn't have to be one big building. It can be two buildings across the street, just A, modern and B, accounting for all the folks that we would need to have downtown. I mean, it's, on a nice day, it's sort of a nice walk to walk across the street.
Do we have a walkover?
We could look certainly in the doing that as well. What would, looking ahead, what would happen is, I would imagine, we would get a program down, we would talk about who's going where and then start to build the timeline as to what are we doing first and then what are we doing second and third and what are we doing simultaneous? And the board's going to be in the picture every major milestone, you know, not necessarily going to have anything to come weekly about, but, you know, we're not going to just unveil a cloth one day and there's a building four years from now. So there'll be a lot of input and a lot of opportunity to, you know, fear a little more to the southeast instead of directly south or a little more to northeast instead of north. And so as we're going through, there'll be presentations on design, on timeline, on where we're at on the financial picture and who's moving where. We've already started formulating some of those thoughts just because that's sort of, I like to look, is this a good idea 20 years from now, not just 20 minutes from now? And that's sort of a cornerstone of planning and design. It has to be a good idea many years from now, not just today. And so we've already got some format of how we're going to approach this thing and there'll be certainly a lot more to come. What was kicking it all off is we wanted to make sure before we did anything else, because it is a lot of work, that we got a consensus from the board on A, direction, you know, is it this direction, is it that direction? And if it's option two, then what will happen is through the channels, Ms. Dobbins and the superintendent, the board will be hearing about when it's appropriate to give you some sort of a feel or update or as we formulate that picture more clearly, we'll be able to discuss even more detail with the board.
And you, just again, for the community and anyone else that needs a refresher, the full board had already come to consensus that we were done looking hither and yon, that we were going, we directed the focus to be on what can we do in this downtown area footprint. So that has already been established, now it's down to which option. And I believe you have consensus on the new green.
Okay, sounds good. We will change the color for future presentations, but we won't be calling it options anymore, it'll be the direction and obviously formulate that direction collectively.
And maybe Board Member Browning can come up with a good name for the project, that would be great. Because we have to call it something and option two is pretty boring.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Yes, the second piece of the asking for consensus is the funding program. Is the board on board with us looking ahead at borrowing against those projects for schools so we can ramp those things up, get them going and then utilize that capital money for this direction that we've just been given? Is there any discussion needed there or consensus in any way?
I really value our CFO's input and I feel like that's what I heard from you, Ms. Boston Ellis, as a creative way to get this started, you're welcome to say whatever you want.
As I shared previously, that is a creative option that we can, we could take if it is the board's desire to go ahead and start this process. They're going to have to know a little bit more information, so I heard Robert say it was going to take about six months, but I can certainly provide the capital plan to them to do their analysis, to check our debt ratio, because you know that's important. We talk about that every year when we do the budget presentation, we can only borrow up to a certain percentage. So we can have them to start looking at that. I think the HVAC projects would be great because these are projects that we are going to have to take care of in our schools. And so it would be a bonus to get going on those projects in our schools.
It really would, especially in the light of the current situation that we're in.
Correct. The only thing is, right now in our five-year plan, in the 1.5 mil, you recall, we use that to pay for debt, it's about 15 million a year. We do have a large piece of debt coming off in four years. We also use the 1.5 mil to transfer about 4.5 million from the capital fund to our general fund to offset maintenance costs that, by the way, are increasing all over our district. And we also pay for our property taxes out of capital. So what happens there is there may not be very much money left to do new projects. But I think just from a personal perspective, doing these HVAC projects in our schools would be a great investment. Their lives are average of 30 years. Robert provided that information to our financial advisors. So that'll go towards creating longevity for our schools.
I like, I actually like that plan because we're not just concentrating on this, we're still doing something in our schools.
Taking care of kids, yeah.
And taking care of some priorities and that moves things up with that, so.
Right. And then the five-year plan, right now, it's about $52 million worth of HVAC projects that are funded. So these are things we're going to do anyway, just going to fast track them. And they're going to be very busy.
They usually are.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
One thing, just as a footnote to clarify, we won't need to take six months to give Ms. Boston Ellis what she needs, I think, to get a jumpstart. Six months would be the overall planning component, but we feel like we've got enough information. You know, we might not know which side of the building the board room is on, but that's irrelevant at this point. We feel like we have enough within 30 days to 45 days max to be able to send enough information to Ms. Boston Ellis to help jumpstart that approach. So just in case anybody was worried about the six months, that's to get into the detailed planning that drives the overall design, but by no means do we need that much time to work on what we would need for financial mapping.
Great, great, yes. And because low interest rates, we keep saying they're not going to last forever, they've stayed low for a long time, but if we're looking at, you know, alone, then we definitely want to strike while that brick's hot.
That concludes our presentation, thank you for your time and guidance.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I apologize, I lost contact there for a period of time. I was able to hear the consensus point and a couple of points that I wanted to make in addition and I'm not, I apologize, I don't know if the earlier comments have gotten through.
Board Member Browning? Board Member Browning, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes, I can.
Okay, good. Because now might be a really good time to make this just part of Board Member Concerns because you have a couple of points to make and then everyone else can make their points as well. How does that sound?
Well, it's fine, yes. I just, what I wanted to do was, I wanted to ask you the procedural question in terms of consensus, like, does consent, I hear the word consensus, does that put it into a non-discussed status going forward at a board meeting?
And we're going to get to your question, but I can't forget as the chair to ask if there's any public comment on the, on the presentation that we just heard. Is there any public comment? All right. Hearing none, yes. And Attorney Powers will weigh in on your question, sir.
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Browning, this is Jeremy Powers.
Yes.
Any board member on any agenda item can pull that agenda item for discussion at any time, it can be further discussed. This is, I think Mr. Knight was outlining it there, that it allows him to proceed forward with one of those options to further research it. That's.
I see.
But you certainly, you certainly can, there certainly will be opportunity for further discussion in that situation.
Yes, yes, in terms of to Mr. Knight then, I have, I always like to see the funding prior to spending it. I like to know where the funding's coming from on any project and I'd like to see it down, whoop, I like to see it, you know, written down and easily understood. Let me ask you, are you, at what point, I sense there's a lot of urgency by a lot of people, this is sort of two-part. Are you going to be able to pull those, those curtains off of those windows and stop the current leaking? That's one. And then the, the second is, what kind of hardship would you be under with a 90-day? I'd like to put some sort of a timeframe to the analysis of this, just so I can do as good a job or anybody, anybody on the board can, notwithstanding the idea that we, you know, the needs have always been there and they always are on a project for a long period of time. Whoops, did I lose you?
Uh.
Can you hear me?
Mr. Browning, this is Mr. Knight. I don't know if you can hear me. As far as taking the window coverings off, this would be a partnership between us and Technical Services because they actually have the manpower to do the physical things that we do not. We have to contract virtually everything we do, so we really more or less a manager of tasks rather than a completer of the tasks. But, so what we would do then is we would take off one of those panels just to see what we're up against. We don't really want to take them all down in one shot because chances are they're not going to go back up if we have to put them back up temporarily in order to do something. I know that some are loose enough that they could be taken down easily, probably do something on the first floor and just see what we're up against and then that'll help us determine, is this a matter of simply putting up a new, more watertight board or are we in over our head and we've got to do something much more significant to address the water penetration? Because it's, it's coming in through the window, the old windows, no doubt, but also the roof and also some of the brick that's lost mortar. And so to avoid spending $850,000 on the skin, we obviously will do the minimum, but do as thorough a job as we can in order to continue to preserve the envelope of the building as long as there's people in it. So we'll start with talking to our counterparts in Tech Services and come up with a quick game plan on how to address some of these in a major way without major expense and time lost.
Okay. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Yes, okay, good. Well, excellent, well, that's a, that's a plus, especially in the superintendent's office and in Elena's office, just all those where there is a, you know, a serious situation, that'll put my mind at rest. Then to the second point, the idea of moving along and not addressing some of these other questions, I would certainly like to have, if I can, let's suppose for a moment I can convince a, enough of the board that we get to the point where we can go out maybe 120 days, what kind of hardship would that cause to you in terms of your efforts to implement some plan that we come up with?
Well, I guess that would determine, depend on what kind of plan you're referring to. As far as how it hampers me or my staff, I can tell you that, right or wrong, we probably wouldn't get headfirst into this unless we were sure we had a consensus from the board because I've done this before and we do have a consensus from the board. So if you're referring to some sort of option as to where to put people, I guess I'm not quite following what sort of plan you're talking.
No, what I, whether, whether there is, and I'm at a bit of a disadvantage because I'm not at the meeting, I really can't and I had to cut, you know, I've lost connection several times, so I apologize for that, I'm just at a disadvantage. I don't know, when I get back, I will know, you know, exactly everything that transpired, I'll look at the video. However, the, I'm asking you, if you don't have consensus, what would the hardship be? Let's suppose we wanted to do a distributive program or we wanted to pick a different location or there was another building that would suddenly be very, very exciting and interesting as an option. What would that do to you from your perspective? What would, what would happen if we went 90 days? I'm going to ask for some period of time, 90 days, 120 days, something like that, so that we can wrap our heads around the mechanics, the financing, the long-term planning, this is going to be a 10, 20, 30-year projection. So I would like to spend at least 90 days looking at some of the demographics, the entire, the entire, we're not the Marion, we're not the Ocala School Board, we're the Marion County School Board and I'd like to be able to have an opportunity to at least advocate that position, whether it finally applies or not, I don't know. But the idea that we can perhaps do a better job with a little bit of discussion, what would that do to you in terms of your overall perspective? Is that, would that crush something that I'm not seeing?
Mr. Board Member Browning?
Yes.
This is a chair thrower and I think you were, you weren't able to hear us when we had a fairly lengthy discussion about the fact that it's so important to bring, help bring you up to speed and get you to a comfort level with the, all of the background work that has taken place over the past 16 years to get to where we are today. So this, so it was suggested and agreed upon that, and even for the rest of us as a board as well, that came on at different times, to be given a timeline and some background as to what has transpired from when this conversation first started to take place back in 2005, including different properties that were considered and then decided against for lots of different reasons, all the way up to today. So, so we can do that concurrently while the staff begins their due diligence with the consensus that we came to before you came onto the board with looking at this downtown footprint and then beginning to move forward as of today with potential funding opportunities, but not, all of this, these issues, we have to vote on along the way in all of these proposals. So I hear what you're saying and there's definitely ways to accomplish both.
A question that I would have is, I'd just like to ask the board, if we did not have our current footprint, let's suppose we were at another, another location and we did want to build somewhere in Marion County, we wanted to build, we had this beautiful opportunity to do it many ways, what would, how, what would be the top 10, top five, top three locations in Marion County that, that might be, you know, like what comes to mind for me is what I'm thinking is like the way the Sheriff's Department is. They're not downtown like in the old days and, you know, they're on a beautiful little piece of property, they can expand. When we wanted to put in, I was on the advisory board, we wanted to put in that, that emergency management facility. You know, there's room to do it and you're not building a tower up, you know, a three-story parking garage, for example. You know, things like that, just so we have a chance, I don't know, maybe you know, how long's the longest anybody's been on the board that's currently sitting? You know, we can't really go way back, or I wouldn't go way back to previous conversations. I, you know, I guess I've been working with Stan Weersdale for 20 years. So, you know, a lot of things, a lot of water goes over the dam over the period of time and I would just like to. and I would just like to see a, I'd like to have an opportunity to actually sit in the same room with my fellow board members and discuss this once now that it's out to the people on these options. And, you know, like what are your top 10? I'd like to hear everybody's top 5 locations. If they all come up Ocala, then that's what that is. So I would just like to see that the best way is to look at all the funds we've got, to look at all the possibilities there are, and then just do the prudent thing regardless of how long maybe we've been thinking about it. I am not, I am not guided by a 15-year-old board, you know, somebody that was here 15 years ago. I'm just not guided by that. Today, these are modern dollars, modern times, modern techniques, we've got Zoom capabilities, we've got people across the world that no longer will go back after this pandemic, they'll never go back to that old way of operating, which is kind of what we're talking about is freezing ourselves for 30 years in an older style of operating. Boy, I just, it just seems exciting to me at least to talk about it. That's all I'm talking about, is just the opportunity to give them the fellow board members and the public and talk about it. That's it.
Thank you, Board Member Browning. And yes, all of those exciting top 5s and top 10s will be included in the timeline that you'll be provided that went from what now feels like prehistoric times all the way up to today. But Vice Chair King did have some comment as well. Does that conclude your comments for today, sir?
Well, at least to this point, I, the idea of, let's see, going back to the fencing in general, now this is in general, I would like to have a conversation about hardening and bunkering and fencing as a concept. I hear the term "the state" a lot and I like to, when you say "the state," you know, Mr. McFadden, when he says "the state," I would like to see the statute. I'd like to, I hate to march to a drummer that we're not necessarily sure of and I'd like to make these safe, but I'd like to design them not to this haystack program but to a program that's designed to make it like when we were young, to go in and play basketball, to do all these things and not make it look like it's a juvenile prison, you know, just the fencing. And there's a way of doing it and at least we can talk about it. You know, my being on the board is more about discussion than anything else. Obviously, we've got our superintendent and she'll handle all of the, you know, the way things happen and the operations, but it just seems to me that discussion is an enormously helpful thing that goes such a long way and includes the community. And once you include the community, you include the students and you include the people that work for us, we're getting to be so huge as to be the largest, the largest business, the largest employer. So what we say we should, we should, if we make, if we err, we should err on the side of conversation that is out and open. And I would like to just put a number to it, I would say there should be 3, 4 open conversations and no rush, right? We're close, but I think discussion helps, at least from my point of view. I'd like to ask, is there anything stopping us from having at least 3 workshops on this before we jump into it? That will conclude my remarks unless there's other questions.
Thank you, Board Member Browning, and there certainly will be many more discussions and workshops as we move forward. Vice Chair King?
Yes, I think it was addressed that this may be, look like it's a fairly new board. It's not. Mr. Browning, I've been sitting on this board for seven years now and this is my third superintendent. I can tell you that there has been several conversations on discussion on what we should be doing with this building or other buildings. We've looked at several properties, we've looked at several buildings, there's been many, many ideas. I think Mr. Knight and their team will put together a timeline so you have a better understanding. There's been other sitting board members that have been here three years that have also been on this conversation along the way. This is not a conversation that is new, it is not a decision that is being made hastily. There's been a thought, a lot of thought, consideration, discussion around this. And I agree that Zooming and that is a good idea in some cases, but in this case, we are working with children and children are not widgets that you can just put to the side and they need people to interact with them. So we're looking at Zooming as in some cases it's okay, but overall, I'm not sure that that may necessarily be a good idea. I think it's probably good that we probably maybe move on with this conversation.
Yes, we're into board comments now.
Yes, because, you know, and it is difficult to be on a board for maybe three weeks and to come in and make really big decisions like this, but, you know, there is a consensus with this board to move forward and I'm comfortable doing that.
Thank you, Vice Chair King. Does that conclude your comments?
That does. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair.
Sure.
Chair, I have no comments. I'm ready to move forward.
Okay. And any other comments?
Nope. I've promised this morning, afternoon.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Gullett?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to thank the board for their thoughtful, your thoughtful insight and feedback as always. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Presspatino, anything for us?
I'm good.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I do want to say this. We did get an email, some of us got an email this morning, that the schedule for the Department of Health calls have been moved up one because they're having a special one for tomorrow, so everybody should have moved up.
Yes, and are you on that one tomorrow?
I'm on the one for tomorrow.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay.
Will they fix the calendar invite?
Yes, and you'll get new invites.
Yes, I just wanted to let everybody know so we won't be.
Right, stepping on each other, right. Yeah, so definitely keep up with your emails and your electronic calendars because I'll go ahead then and move into just a few quick things. And the first one is having to do with our upcoming master board training. And again, you know, we want to do all we can to support Board Member Browning in getting up to speed and so we need to settle on a date for that that works for all of us. So I will ask you between now and Tuesday night's board meeting to take a look at your calendars. FSBA is willing to be very flexible with us. And normally we do it in the morning from 9:00 to 12:00, I think it's usually three or four hours. Yeah, and that seemed to work out really well to have it in the morning, but if we come to consensus that afternoon is better, then we'll do that. So please take a look at your calendars and we will pick a date at the board meeting on Tuesday. And if I don't mention it, please remind me because we really need to get that done.
Can I make a recommendation?
Yes.
Sure. Since, we know most of us are always here on Tuesdays for board meetings, that it be a Tuesday that we do board meetings, just do it that morning because most of us are here on those days.
Okay, well, we'll keep that in mind. So we're looking at a Tuesday as a good suggestion. Okay, and then I also want to thank Board Member Campbell for everything that she did to reach out and invite our state representatives that have come to our schools and really had a chance to see for themselves all of the great things we have going on as well as our great challenges. We are still being asked for feedback on the proposed legislative and federal platforms for Florida School Boards Association. You will have received an email about that, so if you want to respond, there is a deadline there. We also have upcoming is our December meeting for the Florida School Boards Association. You will have already received an email about that. It can begin as early as November 29th and it wraps up usually around noon on December 3rd. That is in Tampa, so it's going to be important to block that out on your calendar and get with Nicole, please, if you haven't already, on what your intentions are for that. We also have coming up our local legislative delegation meeting and that is October, I thought I had it written down, October 7th, yes, and that is a work session day. And what we've generally done in the past is just made sure that our agenda was abbreviated. We really have to be out of here by noon at the latest and it begins at 1:00 to get ourselves down to the Klein Center and so on. So that is October 7th. It's not necessary to RSVP unless you intend to go to the luncheon, which is prior. So those are the things that I had as far as what the whole board needs to keep in their mind and check their calendars for. The second thing is, is that we did get our official school grades for the ones that we opted in for and it is incredible to me that both Evergreen Elementary School and Oak Crest Elementary School were able to earn their way off of the state list and the need to have an external operator. Sadly, it came too late for Evergreen, but they still got it. And I would love, the details can be worked out, but I would love to have both of those schools and everyone that's been associated with it have an opportunity to be recognized and including Jane Elsperman, possibly a representative from Educational Directions, even if they're with us on Zoom, Principal Livingston, Ms. Bayless, I'm just throwing, you know, any teachers that have been involved in that odyssey. It was just an incredible accomplishment under the worst conditions that probably any of us could manufacture and they did it. So congratulations to Evergreen and Oak Crest. And that's just an example and I'll model it for you real quick of, we will not back down. And I got this shirt from Maplewood Elementary School and I just thought that was important to share as we wrap things up. Tom Petty happens to be a personal favorite of me and not backing down and always stepping up for kids is what we're here for and what we're all about. The last thing I have is I'm really looking forward to the Instructional Calendar Committee meeting starting next week. That has become a very collaborative process with a lot of community input and presenting at least two different calendars and surveying our employees and families to see what they think. We're looking at doing a two-year calendar to make it easier for folks to plan. To me, that can be one of the benefits of moving to this progress monitoring, that if everything isn't all about starting school on, you know, when it's still August, very, very hot at the beginning of August, that maybe we can even look at starting the school year much later. And I'll be interested to see what other folks think of that idea. That's just me talking, but it's still really hot at the beginning of August, we're using a lot of air conditioning, prices are still low to be traveling and vacationing at the beach in Florida, which those of us that live here all year round like to do and take advantage of. And, you know, so who knows? Having that progress monitoring may now eliminate the need to feel like we have to start school so, so early in August. So it'll be fun to have that conversation and see what the community and our employees think of that.
That's interesting.
Yeah, so.
We used to start school like when I was a kid, a week before Labor Day.
And kind of get your feet wet.
One week and then the next week we'd be out Monday.
Have a little break. Yeah, yeah.
Long time ago, long time.
Yep, so that's going to be a great conversation. So if that's all I had, if there is nothing else for the...
I think we have one more thing.
Yes.
And because it is fall, there's been some questions about fall festivals and they're outside and that's how schools bring in, you know, funding, like the classroom teachers and schools and the different departments, yes. So I don't know, has there been any decisions about that, if it's outside or no? How, because this being asked? No?
Not yet.
No, thank you, Vice Chair King. No, we have not, so we'll have to have some conversation based on today's input and what we are hearing from the Department of Health with the numbers. We'll work through what that looks like.
Okay.
To provide, as you know, and I think the board certainly agrees, at the full extent possible, access, but safely. So we'll take a look at that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
If we're doing something with Halloween, then, well, I guess, I don't know, I don't even want to go there.
Red Ribbon Week, isn't that coming up?
It's in the spring, isn't it?
I thought it was like October.
Oh, October, oh.
It's in the fall.
That's right, it is in the fall.
Yeah, so there's some things that probably need to be answered because they wonder.
Right, so much of it depends on where we are with the virus, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So everything's kind of in limbo.
One week at a time, almost, it feels like.
Well, and if I may, Madam Chair and the board, that's why, I mean, we meet two times a week with the Department of Health. This week it'll be three times a week and because of the ever-changing conditions, we'll continue to monitor. Unfortunately, sometimes it's week by week. We like to plan in advance, but as we all know, sometimes those numbers change, but we'll be addressing those things as they come. Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, and these are the times where we do have to remind ourselves that these just aren't ordinary times and we want to plan, you know, as long-term out as we can.
Yeah, well, I think what they're thinking it's outside, so of course they're going to be like, well, football is outside, right? So that's why, just if they could think about it and get some answers just because they wonder.
Sure, and those are time-honored traditions, you know, the different festivals that they have at the schools.
Yeah.
So on, so, okay. All right, anything else for the good of the cause or from legal?
I do, actually. The legislative platforms that you had discussed, Ms. Campbell did request that I bring it up to the board just to see if we could narrow down to a couple of things during the comment time as to what we want our proposed platform to be. I sent the FSBA's proposed platform to you via email, though I think you probably already have some of that, but I just realized it got stuck in my drafts folder until just recently, so you might not have gotten it prior to the meeting. However, our potential...
FSBA sent it to us, actually, too.
Okay, all right. Our proposed platform from FSBA, or to FSBA, we had previously discussed, it looks like five primary areas with a possible six, and that was PICO Funds, Pilot Program for Synchronous Virtual Learning. That's actually not going to be applicable anymore due to Representative McLean's bill passed into law in June, so not an issue. So PICO Funds, MTI/MTC allocation, I don't think that's also going to be applicable now at this point. CTE enhancements in secondary schools with an emphasis on middle schools. We hadn't discussed any allocation for an Early Learning Academy, if there is any interest in that. So the three that we have previously discussed were PICO Funds, Pilot Program for Synchronous Virtual, I'm sorry, PICO Funds, CTE enhancements in secondary schools and possibly Early Learning Academy, if there's any interest in doing such a thing, along with any other potential things we may wish to address.
Because we've got to get those palm cards printed.
Right.
And be ready.
Now, it'd be useful if we can develop three or four things for our board to want to have as a platform focus, based on the thinking that you guys have done over these past couple of months as well as items we've discussed as well. So if we have, if we can get that and get some sort of consensus on it, then we can have that, have Ms. Campbell go back to the Legislative Committee and get that done as soon as possible. Otherwise, I wouldn't want us to have, we need to discuss it, of course, in the sunshine if we're going to discuss it. Individually, you can email me anything you want to as far as legislative priorities, but I can't conglomerate a list without us forming a consensus. So is that something that you want to take a moment to discuss now?
Well, yeah, we usually do. Like, let's, go ahead, Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
I do know that Board Member Campbell, because of her conversations with representatives, is very aware, as we are, of the focus on CTE and the possibility of really getting some good funding and support from that area. So, and PICO is always on our minds because we just really need the money. To me, that... we just really need the money. To me, that, even though maybe it takes 10 times to be heard, we need to keep asking. And, and so I would say that the CTE, the PICO, along with CTE, transportation, and I was just having a conversation with one of our representatives last week about this, that because we are the geographic size of Rhode Island, access to programs is always an issue. And so he said, well, if there was one thing that as we park, you could ask from me, what would it be? And I said, transportation. So, but that could be dovetailed into CTE. And then the early learning, that's another great area of interest and focus, I think, for the upcoming legislative session. And we know that the sooner we can get kids rolling, the better off their chances are going to be. So I'm pretty comfortable. That's me. What are you thinking?
Yeah, that's good, they're good. Dr. Gullett, what are you, what are your opinions?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. A couple pieces of information and reminders through the, I want to mention the synchronous learning, as I shared last time that Board Member Campbell brought up, we do not qualify for, based on the last legislative decisions that were made. It had, it required school districts to perform it with a school district grade of an A for 2 consecutive years with no F schools. So I just want to make sure that everyone is aware of that. There was a provision, but we do not qualify. The CTE expansion, absolutely, and you heard, that mentioned earlier today, that we are working diligently to align, very tightly align, our return on investment for our students for their future, to expand for the future what those needs are from our community, and access to that is essential through transportation, so that we, we have great, successful programs in our high schools. As we provide access to that even in the middle school grades and expand it at our high schools, will allow our students to have choice. I think that's important. The early learning, again, huge piece of this, that the success of our students and their future does not begin in high school. It begins in the early grades. So switching that conversation to understand, and research is very clear about this, and I think you all have heard me, I'm very passionate about this, we have to equip them with the early learning grades and the access. We've already expanded for this year, VPK, to all of our elementary schools for the first time, but we need to continue to invest in those early grades, so they have the potential to have these pathways ahead of them. So I greatly support what you're discussing right now. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And we may be remiss by not including our veteran teachers and the continued disparity in salary. While it was wonderful for our governor to provide the $1,000 bonus directly to classroom-only teachers and to our hard-working principals as well, that doesn't come near to covering the spread that there really should be to honor our veteran teachers' education and experience and willingness to mentor our incoming teachers. So I don't think we should let that slide off the plate. And hopefully, our governor already has that in his mind, that, you know, he did something for recruitment last session, now let's do something for retention. But in the meantime, I hope as a board, we were all in agreement to watch that very carefully, because we, we made a commitment that we were going to work on that, and we need to, in my mind.
I agree.
I will note that is also part of the FSBA's 2022 Proposed Legislative Platform that the FSBA has altogether.
Good, so then that would mirror that.
Right, so that is Florida students deserve the most qualified and talented staff at their schools, and a highly skilled and diverse workforce helps ensure Florida has diverse economic future. And it talks about fully funding teacher salary increases and supporting a Grow Your Own Teacher program and some things like that.
Right, and that's not to say that all of our hard-working employees don't deserve to be compensated fairly as well. And I believe that anyone that follows the school board knows that we've been having a lot of conversations and doing what we can and raising substitute pay, you know, before that was because of a crisis, and then we realized it just needed to be that way. And so we see you, we hear you, we thank you, and we appreciate you. Anything else?
So the 4 that I have written down, the PICO Transportation Program Access, was that the one that you were also just addressing, Dr. Gullett, when you talked about the?
CTE.
I'm sorry, well, CTE, that was probably the one you were, you were focused on. The Transportation Program Access, I had a note to ask a question. You meant transportation in general, the issues that we've been experiencing with transportation, and also expanding transportation to individual programs?
Yes, and, yes, that expands it, because we're trying to get our kids able to get to, we're trying to expand choice. But our bus driver shortage is real, critical, and is nationwide. So I'm glad you brought that up, Attorney Powers.
Thank you. And the Early Learning Academy and the, what we just discussed regarding teachers. I'll make sure that we get this put together. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, anything else? Okay, seeing nothing else, we will go ahead and adjourn at 12:56 PM. Gosh, we're out of here before 1:00.